This public hearing before the Health Systems Planning Unit of the Office of Health Strategy, identified by docket number 1932305 CON, is being held on today, March 4, 2020, to consider Newport Academy's application for the establishment of two mental health residential living centers in Fairfield, Connecticut. This public hearing is being held pursuant to Connecticut General Statute Section 19A-639A and will be conducted as a contested case in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 54 of the Connecticut General Statutes. My name is Michaela Mitchell. I have been designated by Victoria Veltre, who is the Executive Director of the Office of Health Strategy, to preside over today's hearing. To my left and your right is Brian Carney, and to my right, and maybe most of your lefts, is Jessica Rival, and they are the staff from the office who are going to assist me today. The hearing is being recorded by post-recording services, reporting services, pardon me. At all times during the hearing today, references to the Health Systems Planning Unit is going to be referred to as HSP. If the applicant, witnesses, and members of the public use acronyms, we just kindly ask that you define the acronym first. I will also direct anyone who forgets to do so. In making its decision, HSP will consider and make written findings concerning the principles and guidelines set forth in Section 19A 639 of the Connecticut General Statutes. The applicant, Newport Academy, has been designated as a party in this proceeding. At this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Carney to read into the record those documents already appearing in HSP's table of record in this case. All documents have been identified for referencing purposes.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to enter into the record Exhibits A through Y. Couple of additions, which would be Exhibit AA, motion for reconsideration and articulation, and Exhibit BB, the ruling on the motion for reconsideration and articulation.
I'm going to go to the applicant's counsel. Just ask that you identify yourself and also indicate whether or not you have any objection to the inclusion of the exhibits into the record.
Good morning, Hearing Officer Mitchell, and thank you also to Ms. Rival and Mr. Carney. My name is Kim Reinhardt from the Law Firm of Wigan and Dana, and I'm here today representing the applicant, Newport Academy. We have no objection to those exhibits going into the record. My only question was that there was an objection to the motion for reconsideration, which was not listed, and so I just wanted to raise that.
I'm going to note that, and we will update the table of record. I believe that there may be some additional late files that we may ask for, so we'll make sure that everything is up to date once the table of record has been finalized, so duly noted.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anything additional?
Hearing Officer, there was a motion that we had filed asking for just some instruction and guidance in terms of the scope of the hearing today, and we'd ask, obviously, in your discretion, whether you'd like to give some guidance on those parameters.
So I will. I'll just go forward and give a few more instructions, and then I will rule on the motion for the setting of parameters for the hearing. So, you're welcome. So for the hearing today, the applicant is going to present a 15-minute overview of the proposed project by way of direct testimony. HSP is then going to have the opportunity to question the applicant. Following those questions, we are going to hear comments from the public. Each person who wishes to speak should have written their name on the sign-up sheet that I believe is outside of the room. If you haven't signed up, just make sure that you sign up. We're going to call legislators and municipal officials first, and then proceed to call members of the public from the sign-up sheets in the order in which they've signed up. I understand, from reviewing the application and correspondence in the record, that there is a disagreement between some residents of the town and the town zoning board about whether or not this proposal is appropriate for the neighborhood. And I just want to make clear that the Office of Health Strategy does not have jurisdiction to consider any zoning issues, so accordingly, this is not the appropriate venue to raise those issues. All testimony and comment should be limited to the guidelines that are set forth in Section 19A 639A of the General Statutes. And you'll find those guidelines on the back of the agenda that Ms. Greer should have provided everyone with today. If you veer outside of those guidelines, I'll guide you back into the appropriate area. With regard to the ruling on the motion, I'm going to make the ruling verbally. So, it looks like on February 25th of 2020, the applicant submitted a motion to OHS to establish parameters for the hearing, and my ruling is as follows. The applicant's request that the hearing officer make an opening statement at the public hearing explaining the importance of a respectful process, reiterating the purpose of the hearing, and also the statutory criteria upon which the CON decision must be made as granted. As stated just a few moments ago, this hearing is not about zoning. It's not about the proximity of the locations contained in the proposal to others in the community, and if OHS would try to weigh that, it would be inappropriate for us to do so. This is not the venue to argue about the proposal's effect on traffic, crime, the residential nature of the location. It is not. This hearing is about the guidelines that are set forth in 19A 639A, and they are as follows. We consider whether the proposed project is consistent with any applicable policies and standards adopted in regulations by the Office of Health Strategy. We consider the relationship of the proposed project to the statewide healthcare facilities and services plan. We also consider whether there is clear public need for the healthcare facility or services proposed by the applicant. We consider whether the applicant has satisfactorily demonstrated how the proposal will impact the financial strength of the healthcare system in the state, or that the proposal is financially feasible. We look at whether the applicant has satisfactorily demonstrated how the proposal will improve quality, accessibility, and cost-effectiveness of healthcare delivery in the region, including but not limited to the provision of or any change in the access to services for Medicaid recipients and indigent persons. We look at the applicant's past and proposed provision of healthcare services to relevant patient populations and payer mix, including but not limited to, again, access to services by Medicaid recipients and indigent persons. We look at whether the applicant has satisfactorily identified the population to be served by the proposed project, and satisfactorily demonstrated that the identified population has a need for the proposed services. We look at the utilization of existing healthcare facilities and healthcare services in the service area of the applicant. We look at whether the applicant has satisfactorily demonstrated that the proposed project shall not result in an unnecessary duplication of existing or approved healthcare services or facilities. We analyze whether an applicant who has failed to provide or reduced access to services by Medicaid recipients or indigent persons has demonstrated good cause for doing so, which shall not be demonstrated solely on the basis of differences in reimbursement rates between Medicaid and other healthcare payers. We look at whether the applicant has satisfactorily demonstrated that the proposal will not negatively impact the diversity of healthcare providers and patient choice in the geographic region, and whether the applicant has satisfactorily demonstrated that any consolidation resulting from the proposal will not adversely affect healthcare costs or accessibility to healthcare. Just one last thing on the first request that was made by the applicant, and that is to reiterate that this is a regulatory proceeding. My job as the presiding officer is to manage these proceedings and to make sure that the record is complete. Everyone who wishes to speak will have an opportunity to do so. We want to hear from you. However, I expect that everyone who is in the room will be respectful of one another during these proceedings. Only one person speaks at a time. There'll be no yelling, no calling out, no speaking out of turn. Anyone who engages in improper conduct designed to interrupt the proceedings, or who is speaking out of order during the proceedings, will be directed to leave. The applicant's second request is denied in part. I have no issue with persons who are providing public comment having a supportive person to be with them while they make their comments. However, because I expect that everyone is going to adhere to my directions regarding the appropriate conduct for these proceedings with regard to giving their public comments, I'm going to go in the order in which people have signed in rather than have the applicant's guests speak first. At this time, I'm going to have the applicant's witnesses raise their hands so that they can be sworn in, and I will ask the hearing reporter to do the swearing-in.
Would you want standing? Raise your right hand. Do you swear your oath of truth, nothing but the truth, so help be God?
At this time, the applicant may proceed with its testimony.
Thank you. Our application will be presented by Joseph Prokopio, the CEO of Newport Academy, Carter Barnhart, the Chief Experience Officer of Newport, and Dr. Michelle Medicine, a longtime provider with Newport Academy. Joe, please, go ahead.
Thank you. Good afternoon, and thank you, Hearing Officer Mitchell, for providing us an opportunity to discuss our program to provide residential mental health services to young adults ages 18 to 26 here in the town of Fairfield. My name is Joe Prokopio. I am the Chief Executive Officer for Newport Academy, and I ask that my prefiled testimony be adopted. Newport Academy is an experienced, high-quality provider of primary mental health treatment. We were founded on the principle of treating the underlying disease, as opposed to the maladaptive behaviors that sometimes accompany those diseases. Our mission was launched in Southern California in a single-family residence early in 2009, and something remarkable happened at that singular house. Young people came to treatment, and they got healthy. Since that time, Newport has grown to over 20 programs, including a residential program for adolescents and young adults ages 14 to 20 in Bethlehem, Connecticut, and an outpatient program in Darien. We are nationally recognized for high-quality, effective, life-changing care. Today, we stand before you with a simple request: Allow a decade-old, experienced, high-quality provider to expand access for care to young adults with primary mental health diagnosis by opening our program here in Fairfield. The need for these services are profound. According to SAMSHA, 8.2% of young adults in Connecticut have reported seriously considering suicide in the last 12 months. As a parent, that should be shocking to most, and frightening. 6.2% have a serious mental illness. The community needs assessments of every local hospital have confirmed that mental health services are lacking. DMS specifically has identified young adults as a "special population of concern" and noted that residential services specifically are lacking. Moreover, 53% of adults with mental illness here in southwest Connecticut receive no help. The need is real, the need is growing, and it cuts across all socioeconomic statuses. On the topic of quality, Newport Academy is a result-driven organization, so much so we have that terminology built right into our mission statement. All of our programs are certified by the Joint Commission, widely known as the gold seal in healthcare. For calendar years 2017 and 2018, we engaged Vanderbilt University to review our outcome data, which we collected using well-accepted tools, PHQ-9, the GAD-7, and the WHO-5, which are a depression scale and anxiety scale and overall wellness. And as will be discussed further by Dr. Medicine, this study showed significant improvement in all measures. Also on quality here in Bethlehem, 76% of the clients who came to us for care last year were referred by professional referents. In 2019, nationally, over 1,300 unique professional referents sent us clients. Professionals in this community and others clearly have confidence in what we do. We survey those professional referents as well, and in last year's surveys, they rated us a 9.1 on a scale of 1 to 10 in terms of overall satisfaction, and 96% of them will continue to refer to Newport. Additionally, we survey our families, our customers. Our residential clients who receive services here in Connecticut scored us a 94 when asked the question, "Would you refer another family in need to Newport Academy?" And finally, as a statement of quality, there's a reason we went to bed last night, there were 147 individuals on a Newport Academy waitlist. Here in Connecticut, that list had 65 as of last evening. On the topic of access, and who will pay for our service, and will we adversely affect other providers in the area? It is clear that we have generated enough interest in Newport, as defined by our utilization of our current capacity and by our waitlist, that we don't need to pull clients from other providers. Last year in Bethlehem, we admitted 55 clients between the ages of 18 and 20, and we also had 300 clients hit our waitlist in that same age cohort who eventually fell off the waitlist because of lack of access to care. Unlike how our opposers frame us, we are an insurance-based healthcare provider. 97% of our revenues in 2019 came from third-party payers. Average out-of-pocket cost for families in 2019 was $3,200. And for our families who can't afford their portion of their subscriber responsibilities, we offer financial hardship relief. Only 1.5% of all of our admissions in Bethlehem were cash-paid clients. In my experience, this commitment to working with insurance companies is crucial in providing access to care. Additionally, in 2019, Newport provided over $3 million in uncompensated care, 1.1 million here in the state of Connecticut. Notably, this does not include the hardship waivers that I previously mentioned. Finally, to further relieve the fiscal burden of families who cannot afford to pay, Newport has committed $100,000 scholarship fund annually for the purpose of the proposed programs to support local clients who cannot access care otherwise. In conclusion, we are excited about the opportunity to provide much-needed care, high-quality mental health services to young adults here in this community and the surrounding communities. I'll allow the rest of my time to Dr. Medicine, who is the interim medical director for Newport's Fairfield project.
Good afternoon. My name is Michelle Medicine. I'm a psychiatrist at Newport Academy Bethlehem Program, and the interim medical director for the proposed youth-adult program in Fairfield. As I discussed, I adopt my prefiled testimony. As I discuss in my prefiled testimony, there's a specific need for services for this young population, young adults. The emerging adulthood delay in development is increasingly recognized as it can incapacitate young adults for years, dropped out of college, not working, dependent financially to their parents, non-emotionally responsible, or not active in society. The challenges and concern of young adults are sufficiently different that they are best served with programs that focus on their specific challenges, as they are no longer adolescent, not yet adults. While young adults need treatment, they do not access readily outpatient treatment, IOP or PHP due to their patterns of poor functioning, lack of responsibility, or denial along with depression and anxiety. They refuse to attend, and because they are legally adults, parents cannot make them go. As a result, they can be stagnant for years. It can be difficult for parents to get withdrawn, young adults to say yes to treatment every day, as it is required for PHP and IOP program, rendering outpatient treatment ineffective. With residential services, parents can capitalize on moments of acceptance and clarity in which a young adult agrees to treatment. As long as a program has availability, the parents and these young adults only need one yes. Once in treatment, support from staff and peers helps reduce the risk of residents leaving the program and dropping out of treatment. Additionally, residential treatment allows for more intensive engagement. We provide at least four hours of clinical program daily using evidence-based interventions addressing their mental health needs. We also provide training in their much-needed life skills. The significant support from staff prevents residents from retreating to their preferred maladaptive coping strategies. They also have the opportunity to develop supportive relationships with their peers and a sense of community that these often-isolate young adults desperately need. Furthermore, family members are integrally involved in treatment, which help address parental-enabling behaviors and conflicted relationships. Through this intensive residential experience, failure to launch is transforming to a successful launch into adulthood, where these young adults can move to college, live independently in their own apartments, working, and now returning to mom and dad. To monitor quality and effectiveness of this treatment, Newport Academy measured its outcome measures and commissioned a third-party statistician to analyze the data. We provided the entire study to you as appendix D to our responses to the first set of completeness questions. The statistician found that the results were highly statistically significant, as well as showing a high degree of clinical improvement. Generally, an improvement of 10% or more is considered clinically significant. Newport's academy outcome shows 45% improvement in resident well-being, 47% decrease in the anxiety index, and 53% decrease in depression index in practice. This translates into residents feeling better, less anxious, less depressed, and with a sense of well-being noticeable by residents and family. They become ready to move into adulthood. Our Connecticut young adult population will be well-served by a residential treatment program specifically designed for their age group that brings that kind of improvement, as documented by validated measures.
Good afternoon. My name is Carter Barnhart, and I'm the Chief Experience Officer at Newport Academy. I adopt my prefiled testimony. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. I am extremely passionate about the needs for young adult services, specifically for individuals struggling with primary mental health diagnoses and needing to utilize insurance. I've worked for Newport Academy for the last eight years and have served in a variety of roles. Among other things, I developed the discharge planning department and the alumni program at Newport Academy. I have also been integrally involved in developing our referral program. As a result, I have personally visited over 300 other programs across the country. We routinely refer to these other programs when an individual does not meet Newport's clinical criteria, is outside of the age range we serve, or when we have a lengthy waitlist. As a result of my experiences, I am acutely aware of the struggles that young people face in finding treatment. Just last Friday, I received a call from a 23-year-old girl who grew up in Fairfield County and lost her mom when she was 16 years old. A few months ago, she found out that her dad is terminally ill and is also in debt. As a teenager, she struggled with depression after the loss of her mom, and finding out about her dad's illness, she told me that she just feels totally hopeless. She can't get out of bed, has lost her job, and feels lost. She reached out to me for support and asked for a solution. She sent me her insurance card and explained that she cannot pay out-of-pocket for a residential stay and would like to stay on the East Coast in case something happens quickly with her dad. I called every program I know. Turnbridge, Mountainside, and Rushford all require a primary substance use disorder diagnosis, and she has not touched drugs or alcohol in months. She did not qualify for Silver Hills inpatient, as she was not acutely suicidal, and their residential program is $46,000 with her insurance coverage, and no additional scholarshiping is available. Angela's house, with a scholarship, would still be about $390 per day. And finally, I called Institute of Living. They explained that she was not acute enough for their three-to-seven-day inpatient program. Desperate, I asked if they had any other suggestions. The woman said, "I wish I did." This is a huge, reoccurring issue in the state of Connecticut. If clients have money, we send them to Florida or California; otherwise, we have no options for primary mental health residential treatment. Ultimately, I was unable to find a single program on the East Coast that would treat her trauma, anxiety, and depression, and accept her insurance. She is now paralyzed with fear, trying to decide if she should fly to California to the one program that takes her insurance and delivers evidence-based care or not. If she were 20 years old, Newport Academy in Bethlehem would be able to work with her and accept her insurance. Unfortunately, she is outside of our age range for that program, and she's not alone. Every week, I personally receive many calls similar to this one. Newport Academy as a company receives even more. We have a dedicated referral relations specialist, whose whole job is finding appropriate placement for people who are not able to be served by Newport's existing programs. Our goal is for every person that calls Newport to find an appropriate treatment option, and we aim to provide three referrals to any person that calls. On average, we provide recommendations to about 85 people a week. As a result, I am highly knowledgeable about the options for treatment, and specifically about the lack of adequate options for young adults requiring residential treatment. It is my hope that OHS will approve Newport's application to open the two homes in Fairfield, so that we can help address at least a small part of this need. I would also like to take a moment to highlight two other aspects of Newport's programming that I believe are very unique: our focus on discharge planning and family involvement. We believe that for long-term success, individuals must have tailored treatment plans after they leave Newport Academy's residential program, and they must have family support. Family involvement is integral to our programming. In addition, we begin discharge planning from the beginning of treatment, and every Newport client leaves with a thorough after-care plan. We also contact individuals and their families weekly after discharge for the first month to offer support, then monthly for at least a year, often longer. We also have a parent and alumni app, which allows our communities to support one another in their recovery, and many alumni attend our events for years after they leave our program. In fact, this past year, we had over 300 alumni and their families attend our event. As you have seen from the letters from alumni and their families I submitted with my prefiled testimony, and as you will hear from the alumni and families who courageously want to share their stories here with you today, the need is crushing. These testimonials also demonstrate the high-quality services Newport Academy provides. I am hopeful that Newport Academy's application is approved, so that we can continue to be a part of the solution for the young adults struggling with mental health conditions. I am happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Nothing further?
Nothing further.
Okay. I'm going to go out of order a little bit. Are there any elected officials? I think we have a list for the elected officials that are here that wanted to speak. I know I saw Senator Wang. I don't know if he's still here. Senator Wang, did you want to come and give your public comment? Is Representative Devlin here?
My name is Brenda Kupchak. I am the first selectwoman in the town of Fairfield. I submitted a letter from myself and also the Board of Selectmen to you a couple of weeks ago. I looked at the criteria that you established for testimony today, and I'm going to try to fit into that criteria the best I can. I'd like to just give you a little bit of history. As a state representative, before I took this office for nine years, I was probably one of the biggest leaders on mental health services and expanding access to mental health in the state legislature. I take that issue very seriously. I met with the CEO of Newport Academy, and I think that their services are important and valuable and needed. I offered the CEO the opportunity to work with us as a town of Fairfield to locate a space in our town in a commercial zone, because I view this medical facility, while very important, as being a medical facility, a business. And I don't believe businesses should be operating in residential areas in our town, unlike any other business. unlike any, like any other business. I am willing to work as the leader of the town of Fairfield to assist Newport Academy in finding a location in a commercial zone to provide services that I believe are desperately needed for our state, for people with addiction and with mental health. But I don't believe it is appropriate in a residential neighborhood, and I'm here to speak about that. So that is all I wanted to say, that I am willing to work diligently with Newport. We do have a lot of locations that are prime opportunities for this facility, because I have had many family members myself who have suffered from drug addiction. And the, and the treatment that they received was about what was happening inside the facility, not where it was located. It was the staff, it was the services, it was the treatment that helped them, not where it was located. So I still have that invitation open, and I hope that you will take me up on it. Thank you for the time.
So let me just, let me, let me just make a brief statement about the content of the statements that are going to be presented to us through public comment. I do understand that there's an ongoing issue of whether or not this proposal is appropriate in a residential area. That is not something that we can decide. I didn't want to interrupt you at all because I want to give you deference because of your position. I respect your position. But OHS has no authority to make decisions about where this applicant can put their program. We have authority to decide the criteria, based upon the criteria that I read to everyone that's here just a few moments ago, and we're bound by that. So I'm just going to ask if there's anything that you're going to say that is regarding the appropriateness of this proposal in this specific area that relates to zoning that you hold it. Don't say it.
So your rules do make this a little bit of a challenge. Laura Devlin, State Representative for the 134th District, which includes the parts of the community of both Fairfield and Trumbull. Because I think we can all agree, the issue of mental illness, the issue of drug addiction is vast, it is widespread, it has been growing, it is serious, and probably, I would guess, every single one of you and everybody in this room, if they haven't dealt with those issues personally directly, has a friend or family member who has. So I don't think there's any question related to that. You do make it a bit challenging with the rules to be able to comment further because, and I do believe that Newport Academy has a positive reputation. I don't think it's unique that other facilities that are private pay at $1,000 plus a day, near $100,000 for a round of treatment that already exist within our state, also include family involvement, also include planning for discharge when that patient comes in. Inpatient is probably a key word, because while we won't talk about zoning, but Newport Academy has been very unclear and misrepresents itself depending on which body it's been in front of. So, you know, a treatment facility like Newport would like to operate in a home-like setting will discharge its patients much like a hospital will, and then they will return to their home. That's quite a distinct difference from a group home that we're not discussing here today. There's been a lot of talk about NIMBY issues and all of that. There is no desire to want to limit opportunities for people in protected classes to live and exist in our communities. I want to make that perfectly clear. But there absolutely is opposition to corporations trying to exploit group home protections. So I will turn it over to Senator Devlin.
First, thank the Office of Health Strategies. I'm going to acronym you as OHS as we begin this conversation. And I do understand the purview and the cognizance that you have in this hearing. It is unfortunate that we have gotten to this point and the frustration that you will sense, and I appreciate the emotions that you're feeling and the asking of the participants and the audience to, to respect the process. But we have gotten to this point because of concerns on how the process has been undertaken. So indulge me if I may, if you may, and let me share with you. I'm State Senator Tony Huang. I represent the 28th District in the Connecticut General Assembly, which encompasses Fairfield, Southport, Westport, Weston, Easton, Newtown, and Sandy Hook. I'm also the ranking minority leader in the Housing Committee, which recently held a public hearing regarding and considering the definition of group homes under Section 8-3E. And, and it was important, it was important to review that process, which articulated the state law exempting group homes in a protected population. So my testimony will focus on the statutory process.
I'm going to note the objection. I'll still, I'll still let him make his point.
Thank you.
But I'm just going to ask if there's any distinction about whether or not a group home belongs in a residential area that is, this is not the appropriate venue for that. And I don't want people to follow you and believe that that is the case and then start going down that road. I have to be able to control this hearing. I have to be able to make sure that we have all of the information that is pertinent to the criteria in the record, and when I'm not able to do that, it makes our job very difficult, and our job is very distinct from what the zoning board does. We are not the zoning board.
Ma'am, I fully appreciate that, and I fully appreciate the concern, and I appreciate the latitude. But it is important, because what came out of the statutory hearing was an insightful conversation in regards to 8-3E. And the reason I offer that is the basic premise of why I am objecting to this application, because this application, from its onset, was made under the premise of the protection afforded under 8-3E. You can refer back to your notes, and I would encourage your body to take that examination to understand that the premise of this entire application up to this point has been based on a premise of protection in its application under 8-3E. And I will be happy to share with this committee or this hearing body testimony and feedback that was part of the legislative process that truly articulated in almost a unified voice, whether you supported it or you were opposed to the statute, the definition of group homes precludes Newport Academy's application. So if you're basing it on this...
We are not.
Then it's unfortunate, but allow me, and I appreciate the latitude. If you are basing a foundation of this application on a false premise...
We are not.
But I would, I would offer and like to enter into record that it is, that if you were to look at the process and look at the definition in which these initial applications were made, they were made under the premise of 8-3E. If that is incorrect...
Senator Wang, you're not listening to me when I talk about the criteria, and I don't mean to be disrespectful to you, but in order to keep this process focused on what we have jurisdiction to look at, I, I, I'm going to ask you if you can focus on our statutory criteria. That would be helpful.
Ms. Mitchell, if I may, I will share with you, a premise of an application based on a false premise has no foundation at all. And it is important that the initial application was based on a false premise and based on a statutory exclusion of Newport Academy. Now, for me, and I would propose the solution moving forward, because make no mistake about it, there are people that I know, there are people that we all know that struggle from the challenges and the emotions of substance abuse and mental health supportive services. There is no denying that. The articulation by Newport Academy was quite telling, quite emotionally pulling. Nevertheless, there is not a problem with me or with any other people in addressing the critical need. There is no doubt of it. But what I have a struggle with this is, and I'll repeat again, the foundation of this original application does not apply under 8-3E. And when you are on a base of a false premise, everything you do after that is tainted by that inaccuracy. I am, I, I am challenged to think that you will not, under a open process and a, I hope, a court proceeding to evaluate this, the foundation which you're going to make your decision on, in which you tell me you're bound by, if it is based on a false premise, the entire process is flawed. So are you going to tell me that if you found that out to be a complete mislead or a misunderstanding, that you're going to approve something because everything else based on a quote, "misrepresentation" or "non-applicability" is going to be okay? I think from your legal background or whatever your background is, in evaluating that, you cannot ignore the fact that the foundation of this premise where we are right now was based upon a false premise. And, and I, in my testimony, you will see the timeline to that process? You will look at the application process? You know, as I review this process, I look at the initial application in which there were multiple names being used. And as I looked at the application on its original approval by the town body, it was represented as a group home. I have the chairman of the Housing Committee. I have participants in a public testimony bound by statute in evaluating 8-3E that uniformly said Newport Academy, however important their mission is, however important the need is, does not qualify under 8-3E. They support the services. So my solution to this, ma'am...
Thank you.
And to your body is, I support their access to services. I support their efforts to come to Fairfield and to provide critical services to our community and throughout the country. I simply ask them to begin the process under the proper context and make the application to our town and to any other town.
We don't have jurisdiction over where they can make their application to the town. You're asking the wrong people to help you with that.
But you raise a very interesting point. The approval process that led to here...
Is for a certificate of need, not for them to decide where to go.
Madam, madam, I think you will see my presentation in my statute, in my testimony.
I'm going to object at this point.
We have to move on.
I, I think it's a frustration point, if I may.
I'm going to give you, I'm going to give you a few more minutes, and then we're going to take a break. And then I'm going to come back, and we will talk about it again, but I can't have people yelling out, this is not how this is going to proceed. This is not a zoning hearing. It's not, and you're making it something that it's not.
Well, I would ask that the body evaluate the testimony written, and I will repeat again, you know, as you have charged under OHS, that grounds for denial of SED licensure included if the resident furnishes or make any false or misleading statement to the Department of Health in order to obtain...
We are not the Department of Health. We're not the Department of Health.
So what you're saying also again is, if there was a false statement made to the Department of Health, and it was brought up in this meeting...
You would need to go to the Department of Health. We can only look at what is before us. We are not the Department of Health. I cannot make a determination on the part of the Department of Health.
Well, allow me to be on the record to say that if the foundation of this application, of which you're only considering, is based on a house of cards and lack the foundation as provided under statutory requirements, that there are grounds for people to pursue alternative action to ensure that this process is proper and that it is correct. All I'm asking for is that people follow the law and respect the process of the application.
We will ensure it.
And this is not just for Fairfield.
Right.
It is for the entire state of Connecticut, and it is an important separation. Let us make no mistake about this premise. I think everyone standing up here and the people out in the audience support that there is a critical need to provide for loved ones and individuals impacted by addiction and mental health services. There is no doubt. But what I'm deeply troubled and deeply disappointed is the fact that we have gotten here to this meeting with many a voice, with one hand tied behind their back, in not being able to have the due process afforded to them. It's disappointing.
Is this not due process? Is this hearing not due process?
Ma'am, you have just hamstrung the entire proceeding...
I have not.
...with regulations. We may agree to disagree. But the, but the guidelines that you have offered is, and I appreciate the latitude that you've given me, but nevertheless, I provided written testimony, and I hope it's a basis for us to continue further conversations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to make another comment before we take a break. I want the people in this room to know that the Office of Health Strategy does not, not empathize with you regarding whatever you may feel about zoning. We do not have jurisdiction over zoning matters. We do not. This is not the proper venue for that. I'm sorry. I have to control this hearing. I have to. We're going to take a 10-minute break. We're going to come back, and then OHS is going to ask some questions. All right, so seeing no legislators or public officials, we're going to go ahead and go back on the record. So we're back on the record, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about the Office of Health Strategy and what we look at when we look at an application, because what I did earlier was I read the criteria that's in the statute, and it's quite wordy. So I just want to make sure that I try to bring it into focus in terms of what we do have jurisdiction over. And when I say jurisdiction, I mean power to make a decision. So we have power to make a decision over whether or not this applicant establishes need for the program, whether or not it's cost-effective, whether or not it's a quality program, and whether or not it, they can demonstrate that they will provide access to all people of Connecticut, including those who are indigent or those who receive Medicaid. That's our criteria that we look at. And now I'm going to just turn it over to my colleague, Jessica Rival. She's going to ask our questions of the applicant. Then we'll go back to public comment.
Hearing Officer Mitchell, may I briefly address the prior comment before we go to questions?
Which one?
The comment made by Senator Wang.
I'm going to ask that you do so briefly?
Very briefly. We just want to set the record straight that there was absolutely no misrepresentation made by Newport Academy in connection with our application, and indeed, the reference to 8-3.
Let me just say that in order for us to proceed with a hearing, that everyone needs to make sure that they exhibit proper decorum. Doing that doesn't facilitate the hearing, it doesn't help in the decision. So I just ask that everybody is respectful, even if you disagree with what's being said. You're going to have the opportunity to talk. I'm going to give it to you. I want to listen to what you have to say. Thank you.
So I just wanted to make very clear that there was absolutely no misrepresentations made in the applications. And in fact, this reference to 8-83, there is no reference to that in the application whatsoever. So I wanted to correct any confusion with that on the record. It is not relevant, as your, as the hearing officer has already noted, but we wanted to be very clear in that regard. And I would also request that the hearing officer issue an order that there be no clapping, cheering, booing, or other things, because the hearing is already in a very emotional place.
So I, I do note your concern, counsel. I do also note... I do also know that there are a lot of people in here that are emotionally vested in the outcome of this decision. So I don't mind if people clap. I just don't want you to disrupt the hearing. It's okay if you clap. It's okay if you cheer. But coughing while someone's speaking, yelling out, those are things that are disruptive to the orderly, you know, flow of the proceedings and I have to control that. Does that understood everybody? I heard a couple yeses. Thank you. Thank you. All right, so we'll move on. Thank you, counselor. We're gonna, I'm gonna turn it over to my colleague, Jessica Rival, who's gonna ask our questions.
Good afternoon. On page 61 of the prefiled testimony that was submitted by Ms. Barnhart, you discuss managing the waitlists for patients needing services. Could you please speak to these waitlists, specifically the approximate number of patients that are currently waitlisted and the number of waitlisted potential clients that could be appropriate for the proposed program in Fairfield?
I think you shared the exact numbers as of this morning. So do you mind if I, Mr. Prokopio, answer in terms of numbers?
So as of this morning, as of last night, we had 147 clients on our waitlist nationally and 65 of those clients were waiting for a bed here in Connecticut.
Okay. And how many of those do you feel would be appropriate for the proposed program?
For the proposed program, there's minimally a handful of those clients that would be available to access care here in Fairfield.
Okay.
We had 11 specific clients who were from Fairfield, from Connecticut on our waitlist as of today.
And for each fiscal year that Newport Academy in Bethlehem has been open, what percentage of those patients have been Connecticut residents?
It's approximately 20%.
20%.
And we think by providing greater access, some more capacity here, we'll be able to accept more Connecticut residents to our program.
Great, thank you. Could you describe how your proposal would help improve the continuum of care for behavioral health services in the area, including how clients would be referred into the program, the program itself, and post-discharge care?
Yeah, so as Mr. Prokopio had noted, the majority of our refer, sorry, can you hear me? The majority of our referrals do come from professional referral sources. I think he said 76% of our referrals come from professional referrals. What that typically means is a therapist, a member of the community. Actually, the programs that I cited, that I had called for this young 24-year-old are some of our biggest referral sources in the area. So we work with a lot of Connecticut programs and get referrals directly from them. Silver Hill Hospital, Rushford, IOL, things like that. Currently, as I had addressed, there's no primary mental health residential treatment center that's able to work with insurance. And so that's really in terms of continuum of care. That's where we see ourselves fitting in. Discharge planning is something that we think about from the very beginning of treatment. How are we going to support the client afterwards? What's the home environment gonna look like? Will they stay locally? What does that exactly look like? And we really try to make that plan as thorough as possible. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Can I just follow up? How much, what percentage of patients who complete your program are referred for post-discharge care, like on an outpatient basis or?
At one of our programs or just in general, an intensive outpatient or a partial hospitalization?
In general.
Most of our clients are recommended to transition to a lower level of care once completing residential treatment. That could be an IOP. It also could just be outpatient providers. We do also offer a virtual care program, continuing connections. Depends on what's most appropriate.
And you have an outpatient program already established in Darien?
Yes.
Could you identify any agreements that you have with other providers within the state to coordinate step downs from residential to the next appropriate level of care?
We have no formal agreement.
Yep. There are, there are no formal agreements between ourselves and other providers. We do business associate agreements with local hospitals. As we have in the Bethlehem community, we're seeking one with Norwalk in reference to this particular program. In terms of referring professionals, it is really, the majority of clients who come to us, you know, through the professional network, go back to the same referent when they are discharged from care. And just to follow up on one of the comments that Carter made, all of our clients leave with a discharge plan, a step down to a lower level of care, typically from a residential setting. No one goes directly unsupported back to home without a, a, a plan of treatment that continues while they're at home.
Can you identify the components in the discharge plan?
Yes. So we do something called attachment-based family therapy while our clients are with us in treatment. So we're looking at the family relationship. We do a family session at the end that's really spelling out what aftercare is going to look like. So will there be weekly family dinners? Things like that, social activities. What's the client passionate about? We really wanna make sure that the kids and young adults that come to our program are getting reconnected to their passions. So tapping into their creative outlets, tapping into what they're passionate about, different activities, and then also putting in that therapeutic component as well. So that could be an IOP, PHP, outpatient. Really looking at all the different needs that a client has as well as educational needs.
Could either of you provide an estimate percentage of each of the primary diagnoses to be treated at the proposed locations in Fairfield?
That may be difficult to predict, but if we look at our history, this past year, 69% of the clients who were admitted to a Newport program had major depressive disorder was the primary diagnosis. Second on our list was anxiety disorder, which I believe was 9%.
And are there other residential programs within the service area that provide similar treatment to young adults?
So there's similar, there's programs that provide primary substance use disorder treatment. So Mountainside is a great example. Good program here in Connecticut that provides primary substance use disorder treatment. And then Silver Hill Hospital provides inpatient care. They do also have a residential program. The residential does not, however, work with insurance.
And Center for Discovery. Center for Discovery does eating disorders specifically here in Fairfield.
Turnbridge also is an example of a program locally that provides, they have a residential component where they take the clients to an IOP, but you have to have a primary substance use disorder diagnosis.
And none of those other programs are, are treating the same age population that you're proposing in this matter?
Turnbridge's program is young adult, however, they go down to age 16. But again, that's primary substance use disorder and it's not a licensed residential treatment sign.
Could you tell me what the average daily cost of treatment for a client in the program would be?
Our average cost nationally for services at the residential level of care run about $800.
Per day?
Per day, per day, yeah, per patient day. Some obviously are more expensive depending on the geographic setting. Others are a little bit less. So how would that compare here in Connecticut? How, what do you estimate the cost to be, the same, higher, or lower? I, I would estimate that it would be very similar. Can you provide us any further evidence to support your assertion about average cost of your service? That's part of our criteria is to evaluate the cost of care. It's highly important to our executive director. Certainly, I mean, we can provide, I guess, when you asked the question about cost of care, I'm assuming you were asking the cost that we incur or the cost for a client? Cost for, for, for the patient, for the client, for the client. So the, sorry, I misunderstood your question. So in our application, in the financials, it was around $1,100 per day. Okay, so for the patient, 1,100, your cost, 800, is that what you're saying basically? Generally speaking, yeah. So again, and I will say the cost is typically reimbursed by insurance companies. 97% of the cases this past year. Thank you.
On page 104 of the prefiled responses to the public hearing issues, it states that Newport Academy is ineligible for both Demus grants and Medicaid participation. Will Newport Academy continue to actively reach out to both DSS and Demus to explore Medicaid eligibility and potential Demus funding in the future?
Yes.
And could you talk to us a little bit about single case agreements and how those work?
Sure, so in many cases, we have relationships with third-party payers. Anthem Blue Cross here in Connecticut, for instance, at Optum. And because of those relationships, we, through the utilization review process and the admission process, contact the payer. And we sign single case agreements, which basically allow the subscriber almost the same benefit as being in an in-network payment in terms of copays and deductibles. And so we establish those on a patient-by-patient basis with the payers. And here in Connecticut, that represented 44% of our business last year.
And will Newport Academy be willing to enter into single case agreements with DSS or Demus in the event of a client referral?
Yes, we have in the past in our history.
Given the stated scholarship level of $100,000 annually, how many patients would that treat in a given year?
It's dependent on let's say, but it will be, you know, two to three clients per year. Again, though, I would reference you back to, you know, Newport has, I think, been a good community partner in that we've provided significant free care. And this would be in addition to that free care. Here in Connecticut, last year was about $1 million.
Would you be willing to consider offering additional scholarship dollars to help serve clients without adequate means to afford the services?
I'd welcome that discussion.
And have you ever considered establishing a priority bed for Medicaid recipients or indigent clients?
We have not.
Is that something that Newport Academy would ever consider?
We, you know, again, we'll welcome that discussion for sure.
Page 106 of the prefiled response to public hearing issues states that Newport Academy continues to work to become an in-network provider with commercial payers in Connecticut. Aside from single case agreements, have any agreements been formalized to become an in-network provider with any of the major insurers in Connecticut?
We have a multi-plan agreement which covers Connecticut. And we have a first-choice agreement that also gives coverage to Connecticut, although I would, you know, again, to be fully transparent, most of those patients are in the Northwest part of the country. It's a national agreement that we have in place. We strategically have come to the conclusion that we wanna be in-network. We've been working diligently over the past two years to gain more in-network agreements. And we have some on the West Coast, you know, in some of our other programs. We've also employed a chief payer officer with whom's her sole responsibility is to gain in-network agreements on our behalf. We've had long conversations with many payers here on the East Coast. We just haven't gotten to a place that we've been able to get signature on the bottom line yet. I do suspect we will be successful before the end of the year.
Can you tell me, if you're able to, why is it taking so long to come to an agreement with these payers?
You know, it's, it's, as any business arrangement, it's a give and take with the other side. And, you know, again, as someone who has worked in healthcare for 30-some-odd years, it does take months, literally, to get an agreement in place with a third-party payer. And a lot of that is situated around pricing. And a lot of that is situated around if you have a vehicle in place already to give access, like a single case agreement, there isn't always the initiative to get an in-network agreement in place. Just for curiosity, how long does it take to complete a, one of the single payer agreements? They are happening literally in a matter of hours now. Again, those relationships with Optum, Aetna, you know, our folks in our admissions call center know who to speak with and we are typically able to get those in a matter of hours.
I have to ask this question.
I hope I have an answer.
Are the single case payer agreements more lucrative than becoming an in-network provider?
Today, they are slightly more, you know, again, they are slightly more profitable than our in-network agreements. But it's not substantially different.
Can you give me an idea of what you mean by substantially?
10%.
Page 106 notes that 97% of the reimbursement received by Newport Academy was from commercial payers. What percentage of the reimbursement from commercial payers represents in-network agreements?
24%.
Thank you.
I have a question for the doctor. Is it doctor, is it?
Medicine.
Menson, got it. Dr. Menson, you were talking about it only takes one yes to have a patient enter treatment with Newport Academy. How do you reduce the risk of them dropping out? Can you talk about the mechanism for that?
Sure.
How that works?
Sure. It's really a relational model. We believe strongly that people who are feeling connected to the staff they work with and with the other peers that are in the program have more chance of remaining in treatment. They see themselves as identical, similar, having commonality with them. And that has reduced drastically any tendency to wanna go away. They belong, they have a sense of belonging. They were, remember, a lot of them are isolated in their room. They don't go much. Some of them, many of them are depressed, isolated, not leaving their room. They're now beginning to belong to the place. And they don't have to do that choice every single day. Even if they don't feel like getting up that morning, the staff is there, present to them, and they help them engage in treatment. It's been very, very weird, yeah, it's been very helpful to do it that way.
How often, if any, do your patients or clients, I wanna make sure I'm saying it correctly, how often do they drop out or leave?
So it tends to be usually around critical events. A phone call that doesn't go the way they may have wished. A rupture in an outside relationship. Then they all of a sudden say, you know, I wanna leave. And, and then usually with people talking and reasoning them, they just settle down and come back and stay in treatment. So it's, it's managing the struggles of the daily life. And most of them try to rely exclusively on avoidance. So we're working with the engagement and, and the sense of connection, they settle down.
How often do people leave?
I may be able to answer that. So our, here in Connecticut, our treatment completion rate is greater than 80%. So the inverse of that obviously are someone who leaves treatment prematurely. And that's a combination of those who we feel can't comply with the program and also parents or individuals who self-select to leave or those who need a higher level of care. And I apologize, I don't have the statistics for each one of those discharges available.
I have another question. And it's regarding financial hardship relief. You said that in terms of financial hardship relief, you have spent $1.1 million in Connecticut? Did I get that right?
No, that's not correct.
Okay.
We did provide $1.1 million of free care, uncompensated care. And that would be a combination of scholarships and/or keeping someone in treatment after their insurance ceases to pay for insurance. The financial hardship, so if a family has a, you know, a large copay that they cannot afford, we have a process where they can fill out an application. We look at the cost of care versus their adjusted gross income. We look at their total income as a comparison to the poverty level. And then we make a judgment as to whether or not we can forego their, their copays or deductibles. And that is not included in the $1.1 million. Is the $1.1 million for Connecticut only? Yes, that's correct, yeah. That's a combination of Bethlehem and Darien.
I wanna ask a couple of questions about continuum of care, aftercare. And I, I heard that there are calls that happen weekly then monthly. What's discussed during those calls? And if there is an issue that's raised, how is that issue then resolved?
Yeah. So it depends on where that client is in their transition, right? We do have parent alumni coordinators as well as alumni coordinators. So those are individuals that reach out to alumni and reach out to parents. If there's any sort of an issue that arises on If there's any sort of an issue that arises on that phone call, they will reach out to, we generally have consents for the local provider that they're seeing, we'll reach out to the local provider, collaborate with that local provider to help make sure that the client's safe.
And one thing I heard during the public comment is that the discharge process would be to discharge a patient like a hospital would. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, so, and I don't really know what it means to discharge a patient like a hospital would, but I don't, I think our process is pretty different, just that clients are with us for a longer length of stay. So we're really able to attach all, address all the different emotional issues that's going on with the client, the behavioral issues, the educational issues. My understanding of hospital discharge planning is just that it refers you to a program, maybe gives a name of two programs that you could go to next, but doesn't actually do that family work, the family contracting, the family agreement as to what's going to happen next, doesn't always look at the educational needs. We're really thorough about what that client's going to be returning to and what exactly that looks like, and working with the family and establishing plans.
And then one other question about the cost of care. So in the application, it looks like there was going to be a hundred thousand dollars in kind of, and I'm not saying it the way that you put it in the application, but kind of like a grant that would be given year over year that would carry over to the next years for, to help people who may be unable to afford for care. And one of the questions we asked is how many patients or clients that would cover in any given year? So the answer was two to three, and I'm just wondering if you can expand upon that and break that down, given the average cost of care is eleven hundred dollars per day? How does that, you know, in terms of the length of stay, like how does that kind of pan out?
Again, if you, and we intend that to be at our cost, our cost. So we would actually apply that against our, you know, potential eight hundred dollars a day in, in costs for services. And so we would provide services, our average length of stay is typically...
Hold on one moment. Thanks. Okay, go ahead.
All right, so let me try to, try again. So we, our intentions with that hundred thousand dollars are to provide access to indigent, indigent clients. We would apply that against our costs, not our typical reimbursement, to, and over an average length of stay of forty-five days. And that's where I came up with the estimate of, you know, two to three clients per year.
So that, that was at the eight hundred dollar rate that you were talking about?
And again, we don't know, I mean, we've created a budget. We don't know intentionally today what all of our costs will be, but that's just an estimate based on our history in other markets.
And your average length of stay for the program was sixty days?
Or? That would be our hope. I mean, that's what we calculated, was I think in the mid-fifties, actually, in the application that we submitted. Our average length of stay nationally, it varies. In Connecticut, last month, it was fifty days for our Bethlehem campus.
All right, so OHS has concluded with its questions. We are going to take another ten-minute break, then we're going to come back for public comment. Thanks, we're off the record.
All right, we're going to open the floor to public comment. I just want to mention that each person that wishes to speak should have written their name on the sign-up sheet, with Leslie Greer, who's standing over to my right, and most of your left. We're going to be calling people in the order in which they signed up to speak, and we're going to give you three minutes each to make your comments. I just want to reiterate that what we do have the power to consider is whether or not there's a need for this service, whether or not it's cost-effective, whether or not it's a quality program, and whether or not it creates access to all Connecticut residents to those services. I know that some of you want to talk about zoning. I know that this is really dear to your heart. I know that some of you live in the area. I do empathize with you. I empathize with everyone who has an opinion. I can't show any, you know, any preference to either side, but I want to reiterate that we really don't have the jurisdiction or the power to make a decision about zoning issues and whether or not this group home that many are referring to, it as whether or not it's appropriate for it to be where it is. We can only consider need, quality, access, and cost. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Greer. She's going to call up the first five commenters.
As I call your name, there's a few, four seats available here, and please seat and come and speak in the order that you're called. First, we'll have Courtney Levy, Chloe Levy, Hugh Hall, Dorian Leslie, Suzanne Krasinski, and Sterling Vanry.
Before the first person comes up to the podium, I just wanted to say, please don't be dismayed if I give you notification that the three minutes is up. We, we have a lot of people that have signed up to speak, and we want to make sure that everyone gets the opportunity to say what is on their mind with regard to this proposal. You can go ahead.
Okay, thank you. A year ago this month, when my seventeen-year-old daughter, oh, sorry. Oh, okay, sorry. I'm Courtney Levi.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
A year ago this month, when my seventeen-year-old daughter needed immediate residential treatment for alcohol abuse, I sent her from the loving, safe environment of our home to receive vital services and treatment in the loving, safe environment of Newport Academy. It was the most painful and difficult decision I've ever made, and also the very best decision I've ever made. The expertly qualified, loving, professional staff was there for our whole family when we needed them most, and I say with certainty that we would not be in the wonderful place we are today without their support, their compassion, and their guidance. Aside from the outstanding services provided, Newport is also truly and deeply committed to providing a safe and healthy environment, which includes healthy and delicious food, and immaculately clean and comfortable living and dining spaces. All of these components are vital to a successful, long-term recovery. With the rapidly growing epidemic of mental illness and substance abuse, it is crucial that we de-stigmatize these issues and provide young adults with a place to go, and not just a place, but a home that provides cutting-edge treatment with unconditional love. I believe everyone is touched by this disease at one time or another, and it is vital that we face these issues directly and allow those in treatment face them with dignity and respect. Thankfully, there is a Newport Academy.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Chloe Levi. In my own experience, growing up in the community that I grew up in, mental health was stigmatized. No one other than my parents knew I was struggling with depression, anxiety, or even on antidepressants. Because I grew up in this community, I felt that it was necessary to hide the fact that I was in so much pain and hurting so badly. I started this journey alone, contemplating each day ending my life and committing suicide. I didn't want to live anymore, and I felt so alone and hopeless. March twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, I arrived to Newport Academy, broken and empty. The Newport community loved me until I learned that I was actually capable of loving myself. I wouldn't be where I am today without Newport Academy. You have no idea who in your own community is struggling with mental health when it is so intensely stigmatized. Newport saved my life, and I can only hope that other people like me can have access to the loving home that is Newport. Thank you.
That was, that was amazing. Hello, my name is Hugh Hall, and I was born in New Haven, and I live in Stanford. I work for KeyBank in the city. I have three kids who were raised in Greenwich. Jack is the oldest, and he has two younger siblings, Sam and Elizabeth. And Jack unfortunately has struggled for many years with depression. He had the misfortune of being raised by his mother who suffered from alcoholism, and the Department of Children and Families removed the children from her care and placed them in my care in two thousand fourteen. He struggled mightily to complete schooling at Brunswick School, which is a very intense private school. He had, he was hospitalized his sophomore year, and the school recommended he find alternate education to complete his year. The Waverly Group, where he was receiving therapeutic care, referred us to Newport Academy and Darien, and he was able to complete his sophomore year there and get back on track and graduate from Brunswick and go to college at Tulane. That all seemed very good. Unfortunately, his depression morphed into a bipolar disorder this year, and he had a psychotic breakdown and was taken into protective care in Tulane four days before Thanksgiving. I flew down to Tulane Medical Center, retrieved my son, brought him back up here, and tried to find care for him in this community, and found it to be very difficult. He unfortunately had a psychotic episode the night before Thanksgiving and fled from the home. The police were able to identify him, and he was taken into protective care at Jamaica Hospital, which was not a great setting for a kid of his young age into being the emergency care psychiatric care unit at Jamaica Hospital. I was able to convince them to release him on the condition that he would go to an appropriate residential treatment program here in Connecticut, and I brought him to Silver Hill Hospital, where he was admitted into the acute care unit. Unfortunately, after ten days, my insurance ran out, and I was not able to continue to care for him at Silver Hill. I brought him home. Unfortunately, he had another psychotic breakdown and was taken to the emergency room at Stanford Hospital. He was there for quite an extended period of time at that point in time, and he was released just before Christmas on condition that he be involved in an after-care program in the community. Unfortunately, I was not able to get him re-enrolled in the IOP program at Silver Hill. They would only accept him into the residential care program at that point, and the cost at almost fifty thousand dollars a month was vastly beyond what I could afford. I began looking for other alternatives in the community and found it extremely difficult. Working with his therapist, I was able to find an appropriate location for him, but it's up in Massachusetts. I brought him there on Monday and dropped him off, and it was absolutely heartbreaking to think that I had dropped my son off at a residential treatment program so far away, and that I could have such difficulty trying to get there, to be with him and support him as he tries to get through the struggles that he is facing.
I'm so sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but are you able to summarize your statements? We're out of time.
Yes, I'm fine. That's all I had to say, but this, the Newport program was excellent for him, and the need for residential care in this community, so there can be support for the families in this area, I think is critical. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Dorina Leslie, and I am from Brookfield, Connecticut. I'm the mother of three young adults. One son is a senior at URI, College of Pharmacy, literally graduating with a four-point-oh. Another is a junior at Manhattan College Dean's List. And then I have a younger, a younger daughter who's just about to turn eighteen. She's struggled immensely with mental health. By the grace of God, she's now out in Utah at New Haven School Residential Treatment Center, and she will graduate out there. Thanks to the folks at Newport Academy in Bethlehem, we saved my daughter's life this past fall. This is my family's story. Julie was silently depressed from fifth grade on. We were completely unaware that there were problems with her mental health until the eighth grade. By ninth grade, she'd struggled with being bullied, and her profound self-esteem and body image issues were compounded when she didn't make the high school dance team, all things you've probably experienced, you know, in the audience. We were fortunate enough to have a guidance counselor at our school who connected deeply with her, but it was way beyond her scope, certainly our scope at home, to handle the depths of my daughter's needs. She was just really, really struggling. She's, has spent five days at Yale, a day at Danbury Hospital, three weeks at New York Presbyterian. Thankfully, I transferred her to Newport Academy October thirteenth through December thirty-first, flew her out to Utah. While at Newport Academy, Julie was able to finally let her healing begin, and for the first time ever, revealing dark secrets that were the cause of her post-traumatic stress and the chaos in her life. It took two and a half days for a hairstylist to unravel the nods in my daughter's self-proclaimed depression hair, a year or so in the making, evidence of the severity of her depression and suicidal ideation. I'm on the board for the AFSP in the state of Connecticut. That's the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. I'm a massage therapist. I am absolutely about healing for body, mind, and spirit. I have gone to bat all over the state of Connecticut looking for help for my family, and I can tell you right now that Newport Academy not only saved my daughter's life, it is critical that we bring services to the state of Connecticut. I should not have to fly to Utah. I just got back. I got into a total car wreck last Tuesday, flew out to Utah Wednesday, I came back Sunday, and I'm here because this is that important to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Susan Krasinski, and I live in Milford, Connecticut. I'm the parent of a child who's currently receiving care at Newport Academy. It's not easy to stand here sharing my story, mostly because of the unfortunate stigma still attached to mental illness. If I told you that my seventeen-year-old daughter had a life-altering physical illness and our family was fighting insurance company to keep her in quality treatment, there would be no judgment or blame. There'd be fundraisers and GoFundMe pages and food trains. However, my beautiful, intelligent, and creative daughter struggles with a mental illness. No one is bringing casserole to our door, and many of their so-called friends we have known since she was in kindergarten have disappeared from our lives. It's often a very lonely place to be. We were very lucky to find Newport Academy and are even more fortunate that Bethlehem is just an hour drive. Finding a quality residential care program close to your home is like finding the pot of gold at the end of the rainbow. Unlike families who live far away, my husband and I are able to attend in-person weekly family therapy sessions and the bi-weekly Saturday family programming. Many families at Bethlehem are not able to do so because of the distance and the cost. Newport has provided our daughter with high-quality mental health services in a safe and loving environment. From my first phone call to Newport, we have been treated with respect and dignity and provided with the support and care we need, and our daughter needs to be successful. Many mental health service providers do not accept insurance. Thankfully, Newport does. The nonprofit mental health service providers that provide quality care do not accept insurance and require families to pay out of pocket. The costs for those services are exorbitant, and most families like ours cannot afford it. In two thousand seventeen, the National Institute of Mental Health estimated that twenty-five point eight percent of young adults ages eighteen to twenty-five are affected with a mental illness. That's one in four. Chances are, everyone in this room knows a young adult that is struggling or has struggled with a mental illness, and if you don't know one, it may be because they have chosen not to share their struggle with you out of fear of being judged. I know that many people in this room here today are in opposition, and for some, it's because of the fear of the unknown. The clients who attend Newport come from loving, caring families, families just like yours. Some clients are actually your neighbors, and you just don't know it. I don't wish this journey on anyone. However, if someday your journey takes you down a similar path, I hope it'll be much easier for you. I'm here with hope that in the future, people with mental illness are not ostracized or feared, but treated with respect and empathy. Because mental health issues are so prevalent, programs like Newport are needed and crucial. There are too many families suffering with loss because they could not be helped. We could have been one of those statistics. Thankfully, we were able to find Newport and give our daughter the support she needs. Thank you for your consideration for allowing Newport to serve more families in need.
Hi. My name's Sterling. I attended Newport from March twenty-seventh to May fifth of last year. I'm nineteen years old, and I'm from New York City. I'm just going to tell you a little bit about myself. So a year ago, I was a teenager that needed help. So a year ago, I was a teenager that needed help. I'd received treatment from other places before, but resisted the idea of checking myself back in, even though I knew I needed it. For Newport, I had an impression in my mind of what a treatment center looked like and it did not seem like a pleasant idea to go back. I've been brought into those treatment centers on stretchers. But in Newport, I was brought in with open arms. I did not feel like a pig in a pen, felt like a person who had arrived at home. The treatment I received at Newport was unlike any I had ever experienced. It felt nurturing and natural, not sterile and procedural. As I said, I'm 19 years old. I, I, I don't like being this dramatic, I feel sometimes. That might just be the stigma that I feel and it's been talked about. But one year ago, I felt my life was out of control and one of the greatest fears on my mind was that I would not wake up the next morning. I came to a point where I had to face that that fear could become a reality. And if I didn't take action against it, it would happen to me. And I've seen families lose children to these disease, to this disease. I had friends growing up that passed away from this disease. I'd seen how those families have reacted. And I didn't want my family to go through that. I'm, I'm one of the lucky ones. Tomorrow, I celebrate a year in recovery and that's a year I could not guarantee I would have if not for Newport. Kids like me need help, no place like Newport gives. Without that, they face the same reality I did just a year ago. The reality of becoming a statistic. Newport gave me the ability to see myself as a human being, so I did not have to become one of those statistics. I just want to close to this, with this. I'm a little frustrated at the room. And I would just like everyone to know that I have, despite my disagreement, I have love for every single person in this room. And I hope that you can find the kindness in your hearts to have love for kids like me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll call David Feldman, Megan McLeod, Justin Spencer, Sidney Watrous and Tom McManus.
Uh, sure. Sure. Was it?
That's okay. No, not to worry. That's okay.
All right, who's first, Leslie?
Sidney Watrous.
Mr. Feldman?
Mr. Feldman?
Mr. Feldman?
All right, we're going to go on to the next person.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Hearing Officer Mitchell and members of the OHS for allowing me to comment on the matter before you. Before I begin my prepared testimony, I would like to say on behalf of a lot of people in this room, that I want to thank all of the people who came forward to speak about their struggles, their disorders, their incredible tumultuous journeys that is so important that we keep shining a light on the importance of mental health and, and quality delivery of mental health care. I think it took a lot of courage and I applaud them, so. My name is Megan McLeod and I am the president of the Neighbors for Neighborhood Preservation, which you may also hear referred to as Neighbors. As you are aware, Neighbors requested and was denied status as an intervener in this matter. This afternoon, I and five additional commentators, Sam Kingston, Sidney Watrous, Tom McManus, Joe Cirillo and Justin Spencer, will be speaking to you as representatives of Neighbors for Neighborhood Preservation. We're thankful for this opportunity. During this public comment period, you've heard from other members of the public. Please be aware that only myself and the five individuals I just named are speaking on behalf of our organization, Neighbors for Neighborhood Preservation. I also want to make a few issues clear to you at the very outset. First, despite the information you may have received by Newport Academy, Neighbors in no way condones the discrimination of those suffering from mental health issues. And as you will hear from Neighbors representatives this afternoon, in fact, quite the opposite is true. Second, Neighbors will be wholeheartedly in favor of any mental health treatment center that serves Medicaid and underinsured patients with quality delivery of care, including those proposed and facilitated by Newport Academy and many of their other locations if this application was approved. Third, Neighbors will not be addressing any zoning issues during this public hearing as this is irrelevant to the Office of Health Strategies' assessment of whether approved the CON. I would however, like to clarify your statement about the jurisdiction, Hearing Officer. I want to confirm that it is over the application specifically before us, that is the two sites specific. It's not about any application for the general need of these services in any unlimited term of universe. It's specifically this application, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. I'd like to begin by providing you with some relevant background on Newport Academy. An investor-driven, for-profit provider of behavioral health and substance use disorder services that will not serve Medicaid beneficiaries or even enter into in-network contracts with insurance plans to any meaningful degree, will drive up the cost of healthcare and further fragment the healthcare delivery system and where certain is not needed in the town of Fairfield in this model or the state of Connecticut as a whole. To the contrary, ample treatment facilities already exist for young adults ages 18 to 26 who struggle with these issues and have the means individually or through their families to self-pay or have insurance plans willing to pay high rates, such as the estimated 1,100 to 1,300 per day that it will cost to receive these services at Newport Academy's proposed facilities. The problem is that most Connecticut residents, especially the uninsured and underinsured, don't have these resources. With an anticipated average length stay of 60 days or a total cost of approximately $66,000 to $78,000, up to the targeted program term of 90 days, which would be $117,000 per patient, Newport Academy's services will not be available or affordable to the vast majority of patients who require this care. Accordingly, approval of Newport's highly flawed CON application would only add to the grave social and economic disparities in access to behavioral care, health and substance use disorder treatment that are already recognized, exist in the state of Connecticut and throughout the United States.
Can you summarize the remainder of your statement?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
It's very important to focus, as you said, on the mandates of your office. As an agency that follows Statute 19A 639A, you address the specific cost delivery of quality mental health care delivery. We must scrutinize and analyze the cost of that care and whether the same outcome delivery can be achieved at a cheaper price tag. Then we expand care, then we treat more people, and then we treat this epidemic the way it needs to be treated, as many of their representatives have demonstrated. Charging this amount of money is simply prohibitive to so many people who need this. In our state, over 20% of all of our residents are covered by Medicaid. This model shuts the door in their face and we need to analyze what the cost of this treatment is and how we can deliver it at a cheaper model so that we can improve access to care. Thank you very much. I'm going to turn my next speaker over to Sidney.
Good afternoon. My name is Sam Kingston. I'm here on behalf of the Neighbors for Neighborhood Preservation. My comments today will focus on the fact that Newport Academy has not shown a clear public need for the proposed mental health residential living centers. As OHS is aware, there's no statutory definition for what constitutes clear public need under CGS 19A-639A3, even though this is a central issue in con proceedings involving a proposed facility or service. However, in the state health plan, OHS's predecessor, the Office of Healthcare Access, essentially defined clear public need when it defined an unmet healthcare need as one that can result from a lack of availability of services or a lack of affordability of available services. In the state health plan and its supplements, OHCA adopted a two-pronged definition for which constitutes an unmet healthcare need. Essentially, unmet need is defined as either, one, the inadequate availability of healthcare services that are necessary to deal with a particular health problem, or two, when individuals of a distinct socioeconomic group, such as the low-income or uninsured population, forego or delay accessing need, needed health, available healthcare services because the cost of healthcare is unaffordable. Newport Academy's con proposal does not address an unmet need of Connecticut under the either prong. In fact, the two mental health residential living centers that Newport Academy is proposing will make what is already a bad healthcare accessibility and affordability problem worse for the large majority of state residents. Therefore, the con proposal cannot reasonably be seen as coming anywhere close to meeting the clear public need standard OHS must consider. Hearing Officer Mitchell, I would also like to point out that Newport Academy's use of national SAMSA data and other anecdotal evidence does not show that the needs of the patients of Newport Academy seek to serve out, seek to serve are not being adequately met. In this application, Newport Academy provides national estimates of the incidence of, one, co-occurring substance use disorder and mental illness and, two, major depressive disorder among adults ages 18 to 25, which are based on a 2017 national survey. Newport then applies the national prevalence rates to the population of adults ages 18 to 25 in Fairfield County and the state of Connecticut for what that is where the analysis stops. Newport provides no evidence that the incidence rates in either Fairfield County or Connecticut are consistent with national rates, or more importantly, that the self-pay and private pay patients Newport is seeking to serve are unable to maintain residential care if they are encountering these health problems. In fact, the only treatment facility for which Newport has provided a waiting list of any kind pertains to its own Bethlehem location. Originally, Newport stated that its Bethlehem facility had an average waiting list of 17 to 20 people. Now they're saying that's higher. In addition, and we don't agree with that necessarily.
I'm going to ask you to summarize the remainder of your comments.
Sure. In addition, basically, when OHS asked the question 10, its first round of completeness questions for Newport to provide data on the MHRLCs and its primary service arena, Newport named eight other facilities, but did not identify the utilization of a single one. Finally, in an initial con application, Newport provided only eight letters of support from local clinicians stating that there's a need for proposed services, most of which are only one paragraph and not really extensive. We are, we are not attempting to disparage the work being done by these individuals, organizations, however, simple fact is that it's not really extensive. So concluding, Newport waffles between its proposed service area being compromised of Fairfield County and the state of Connecticut as a whole, but there's no neighboring states or beyond. Newport Academy also applies its data cited in its application for these two areas suggests that there are several thousand Fairfield County residents and tens of thousands of Connecticut residents, and we don't agree with this. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hearing Officer Mitchell, OHS staff, thank you for the opportunity to speak before you today. My name is Sidney Watrous and I am here on behalf of Neighbors for Neighborhood Preservation. My comments today-
Ms. Watrous?
Yes.
I just want to make sure, can everybody hear Ms. Watrous? Okay, just, there you go.
My comments today will focus on the fact that the CON proposal will not serve Connecticut's identified need for additional services for low-income young adults. As noted by Sam, the second definition of an unmet healthcare need that has been used in the state healthcare plans issued by OHCA applies when individuals of a distinct socioeconomic group, such as people with low income or without insurance, forego or delay accessing needed available care because the cost of that care is unaffordable. A true need for behavioral health and substance use disorder services exists for low-income, vulnerable populations in Connecticut as opposed to the more affluent clientele Newport Academy is targeting. This is shown by a 2014 report issued by the task force to study the provision of behavioral health services for young adults. While the task force did determine that there was a substantial unmet need for mental health and behavioral health services for young adults in the state, it focused on two groups that were particularly at risk. Young adults who have been in the child welfare system and those with experience in the juvenile court system. This clearly is not Newport Academy's target population. The prohibitively high cost of a 60 to 90-day stay at Newport Academy's proposed mental health residential living centers, combined with Newport Academy's failure to serve Medicaid beneficiaries in any meaningful way or even participate as an in-network provider in commercial insurance plans, means that many insured and underinsured individuals, as well as all low-income people, will be precluded from accessing its services. Unfortunately, the high cost of services offered by providers like Newport Academy constitutes the single biggest barrier to access for those in need of behavioral health and substance use disorder treatment. This is also recognized by policymakers outside of Connecticut. For example, SAMSA reported that a third of the people in the United States who needed and perceived a need for drug treatment at a specialty facility but did not receive it had no healthcare coverage and were not able to afford the cost. With respect to mental health, SAMSA reported that in 2018, about two out of five adults with any mental illness and slightly over half of those with serious mental illness who perceived an unmet need for mental health services did not receive services because they could not afford the cost of care. Approval of Newport Academy's CON proposal does nothing to fix this problem. Newport Academy's CON proposal fails to meet the identified need of providing low-cost and comprehensive behavioral health and substance use disorder treatment to those populations in Connecticut. Newport Academy should not be permitted to serve only its affluent target demographic in and around Fairfield County without taking on an ongoing and meaningful responsibility to serve residents of much lower and underserved communities that unfortunately are often no more than a zip code away. Without a much stronger commitment to do so, it is Neighbors' position that OHS should deny this CON proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Tom McManus.
How are you?
Doing well, thank you. First off, I want to address the people that spoke, the families and former patients and patients that are, will be going into the facility potentially. But, you know, I applaud your courage and we do care about all of you and we do wish you the best. We want to make sure that the best services are available to you. And I believe, so my issue is not with the caregivers, it is with the business model of Newport Academy. Anytime you put a private equity fund that is in control of a healthcare provider, there's going to be problems. As we can see as an example, as in CRC Health, which I would actually, which Newport Academy's CEO worked at for half of his career. I would like to hear maybe from him, what were some of the shortcomings he saw in that model that is dollar-driven? My name is Tom McManus, as I mentioned, and I am here on behalf of Neighbors for Neighborhood Preservation. My comments today will focus on the fact that the scholarship program proposed by Newport Academy and Newport's promises to explore deimus and Medicaid participation are far too little for an applicant with such significant financial backing, whose proposal does not improve the accessibility, cost effectiveness, or quality of care in the region. Newport Academy is willing to fund scholarships of $100,000 per year for the uninsured and underinsured to receive care at its proposed facilities. This is an organization that was reported three years ago to have 20 million EBITDA and that was before it was purchased by a private equity firm that controls 224 billion in assets. Hearing Officer Mitchell, this scholarship fund is clearly just a token gesture and should not merit any consideration as a basis for approving Newport's con proposal. The fact of the matter is that $100,000 barely covers the cost for one 60-day stay at Newport Academy's proposed mental health residential living center. And even then, it appears that the recipient of the scholarship receives only 45 days of treatment, far less than the average length of stay of 60 days and 50% less than the 90-day stay that Newport says is optimal. Newport Academy's scholarship program does not sufficiently address the- model that is dollar-driven. My name is Tom McManus, as I mentioned, and I am here on behalf of Neighbors for Neighborhood Preservation. My comments today will focus on the fact that the scholarship program proposed by Newport Academy and Newport's promises to explore de-mus and Medicaid participation are far too little for an applicant with such significant financial backing, whose proposal does not improve the accessibility, cost-effectness, or quality of care in the region. Newport Academy is willing to fund scholarships of a hundred thousand per year for the uninsured and underinsured to receive care at its proposed facilities. This is an organization that was reported three years ago to have twenty million EBITDA, and that was before it was purchased by a private equity firm that controls two-hundred-and-twenty-four billion in assets. Hearing Officer Mitchell, this scholarship fund is clearly just a token gesture and should not merit any consideration as a basis for approving Newport's con proposal. The fact of the matter is that a hundred thousand barely covers the cost for one sixty-day stay at Newport Academy's proposed mental health residential living center, and even then, it appears that the recipient of the scholarship receives only forty-five days of treatment, far less than the average length of stay of sixty days and fifty percent less than the ninety-day stay that Newport says is optimal. Newport Academy's scholarship program does not sufficiently address the unmet healthcare needs of Connecticut and in particular Fairfield County to improve access and lower the cost of behavioral health and substance use disorder treatment for uninsured and underinsured young adults. There must be a solution that would allow Newport Academy to be a substantive provider to Medicaid and other underserved populations if Newport wants there to be one, but it doesn't. The backwards logic Newport Academy has applied in answers to OHS's inquiries on serving the Medicaid population should be rejected for the same reasons as its con application. If it were truly committed to serving the whole community, Newport would have begun coordinating with these agencies long ago and would have finalized agreements with these agencies in advance of filing its con application. Instead, the evasive responses it has provided on these critical issues hardly rise to the level of demonstrating good cause for its failure to provide access to Medicaid beneficiaries or indigent persons as required by CGS 19A-639A10. Finally, despite all the hyperbole surrounding the alleged benefits of its services, Newport Academy has not provided any reliable data on which its outcomes can be measured. To the contrary, the outcomes report attached as Appendix D to its August 19, 2019 responses to OHS's first completeness letter appears to be little more than a compilation, a compilation of subjective survey results from patients. That Newport Academy falls short of objectively demonstrating the quality of its care is summarized in analysis of the outcomes report performed by Ian McKeeg, Ph.D., a professor of biostatistics at the Columbia University Mailman School of Public Health, who was consulted by Neighbors. As shown in Dr. McKeeg's letter, which we attached along with his CV as Exhibit B to our intervenor petition, the outcomes report fails to produce credible evidence to support Newport's claim in its August 19, 2019 completeness response to OHS Question Seven, that the surveyed patients showed steady improvement across all validated measures.
Can you summarize your?
Okay. To conclude, Newport, Neighbors believes that serious questions exist regarding how the proposal would improve the quality of accessibility and cost of care in the region. This reality, in combination with Newport's vast resources, give us reason to believe that the scholarship program proposed by Newport Academy and Newport's promises to explore de-mus and Medicaid participation in the future are just not enough. For these reasons and others addressed by Neighbors this afternoon, we believe that Newport has failed to meet the standards OHS must consider and OHS should deny their proposal.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, my name is Joseph Sorillo, and I'm here on behalf of Neighbors for Neighborhood Preservation as well. My comments today will focus on the fact that approval of Newport Academy's CON would be contrary to the public policy aimed at controlling the cost of care and improving the coordination of care. The year 2020 began with Governor Lamont signing an executive order to establish healthcare cost growth benchmark in Connecticut designed to control healthcare spending for individuals, businesses, and state government. In remarks he delivered in connection with the executive order, Governor Lamont explained that Connecticut ranked sixth nationally for healthcare spending and has significant health disparities that we must address. As discussed by the neighborhood's representatives, approval of Newport Academy's CON would fail to rein in the cost of healthcare or level the playing field for the Medicaid beneficiaries, the underinsured, and the indigent. It would also hurt individuals, families, and businesses that have private insurance. The National Conference of State Legislators specifically mentioned this issue in its 2018 report titled "The Cost and Consequences of Disparities in Behavioral Healthcare," where it stated that even among those with insurance, the cost of deductibles and copayments may be a barrier to getting mental health care. This is especially true here since Newport Academy has provided no indication that it will be an in-network provider with insurance plans in Connecticut and will therefore subject patients to higher out-of-network cost-sharing amounts and the potential of balanced billing for the difference between what is covered and the per diem cost of eleven to thirteen hundred dollars for Newport services. While Newport has gone to great lengths to talk about its negotiation of single-case arrangements with commercial payers, there are several reasons why OHS should be concerned with Newport remaining an out-of-network provider. First, the information Newport Academy has provided as the sources of its revenue seem improbable. Newport Academy has stated that ninety-seven percent of its reimbursement received in 2019 was from commercial payers. When it completed Table Six of the original CON application, which required Newport to break out payer mix by patient volume and not revenues, it stated that in each of the first three years of operations of the proposed MHRLCs, it expects seventy patients total, sixty-eight commercially insured, and two self-pay. This breaks down to ninety-seven percent of all patients being commercially insured and three percent of patients being self-pay. Since Newport Academy has acknowledged that commercially insured patients are subject to copays, coinsurance, and deductibles even when in-network, ninety-seven percent of reimbursements being paid by commercial insurance is mathematically possible only if there are no copays, no coinsurance, and no deductibles, and Newport Academy has admitted that is not the case.
I'm going to ask you to summarize your final statements.
Yes. Newport has also claimed that the vast majority of single-case arrangements with commercial payers are treated as in-network benefits for insurance. The fact of the matter is, if it were that easy, claimed to craft single-case agreements that are covered in network benefits, Newport would just be in-network. Instead, the insurance companies have apparently recognized Newport Academy for what it is, a high-cost provider that is unwilling to agree to in-network rates and therefore has to be constantly reined in.
Thank you.
This is confirmed by the prefiled testimony of CEO Mr. Procopio, who testified that Newport Academy--
Are you almost, I'm going to ask you to--
This is my last sentence.
Thanks.
Who testified that Newport Academy generally recommends that residents plan to stay for ninety days, but we anticipate average range of forty-five to sixty days per stay as a result of insurance pressures. Basically, the money runs out, and they're discharged. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, my name is James White, and I also represent Neighbors for Neighborhood Preservation. I want to speak more particularly to the insurance aspects of this application for a few minutes, but before I do, let me make something very clear. I agree with my neighbors that this proposal should never have been approved through all the various certificate of need issues that we have raised. However, I want the Commissioner of Public Health and the Executive Director of OHS to know if they are even thinking of approving this application, they have to put themselves in the shoes of a patient or parent of a young adult who is in crisis and needs services. That is certainly not the time that anyone wants to be haggling with their insurance company over out-of-network benefits or realize that they are simply too poor or underinsured to have to pay a much higher out-of-network cost sharing amounts in order to access care. I think we can all cite insurance, and for many of us, we can all cite an instance, and for many, for many of us, many of them, where we have been nickelled and dimed by an insurance company. This happens even when you want to get a simple test at your doctor's office or a prescription approved. Now multiply that by, multiply that and think about asking for an insurance company to pay sixty to eighty thousand dollars for a young adult to stay in some residence in Fairfield, Connecticut, at a time when that young adult really needs help. Nothing I have heard at this hearing or read about single-case agreements gives me any comfort that will be any significant, that there will not be significant roadblocks put up by insurance companies with regard to getting care at Newport Academy. That is why this agency should insist that it is in condition to any approval that Newport Academy might be required to enter into in-network agreements with their major Connecticut insurance companies, and that all residents of these facilities be from Connecticut so that Newport Academy can't circumvent these insurance requirements. Finally, there is no question to me that these facilities should take care of people eligible for Medicaid or otherwise who don't have insurance. The Kaiser Family Foundation says that approximately twenty percent of the three-and-a-half-million people in Connecticut are covered by Medicaid or Children's Health Insurance Program. There's a Kaiser Foundation October 2, 2019 fact sheet that speaks to this. The Carlisle Group and Newport Academy can certainly afford to take care of Connecticut's underprivileged citizens, so we would propose that the following conditions be part of any approval of this con, and that the OHS and DPH make sure the conditions are met before Newport Academy is granted a license to operate a mental health residential living center or any similar facility, and before it opens its doors. Newport Academy is in-network with enough major insurance companies so that ninety percent of the lives that are covered by private insurance in Connecticut, i.e. covered lives, will be assured of the in-network benefits should they choose to utilize MHRLCs. Newport Academy says there's a clear public need of Connecticut residents, so the MHRLCs should take care of only Connecticut residents, and one bed in each gender-specific, six-bed MHRLC should be set aside to continuously provide free care for a Medicaid beneficiary or person who is uninsured but would qualify under the Medicaid financial test. Two out of twelve beds equates to roughly twenty percent of the Connecticut population that is covered by Medicaid.
Can you summarize the final recommendations that you have?
You know, we're all here to, you know, we all hear, sorry, you know, we hear all the time from our politicians and government officials about the high cost of healthcare. I also read about media reports on surprise bills and other healthcare costs that can drive affluent families into bankruptcy. Well, now is the time for your agency to put its money where its mouth is and do something to help healthcare consumers that is meaningful. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll call Brett Stern, Ally Kernard, Sabine Edgett, Elizabeth Hurlick, and Mark Richards.
Turn this thing on.
Hello.
Hey. My name is Brett Stern. Many neighbors in our community have loved ones with disabilities or have dedicated their life's work to serving disabled. We are keenly aware of the importance and empathy and care for the disabled. Newport Academy's accusations of nemic behavior are insulting and proof that they are out of touch with our community. Newport Academy and their private equity banker, the Carlisle Group, plan to bring Wall Street beyond Main Street, and they want to bring Wall Street to residential communities. Individuals with intellectual and physical disabilities, that include a range of conditions such as dementia, autism spectral disorder, cerebral palsy, AIDS, and many other conditions, rely on the assisted living resources that are often limited in availability. Many families struggle to meet the challenges associated with a disability that a loved one might endure. These families cannot provide the daily care for the well-being of their child, parent, or family member, and they rely on group homes as the answer to full-time permanent residence. Long-term residential options in a home setting are critical for the pooling of resources in order to provide a sound quality of life. Groups of individuals requiring similar needs can share the cost and make access more affordable for each individual. The concept of group home originated through the deinstitutionalization. Families and communities sought a safer and more compassionate solution, an alternative to the dismal environment of a hospital setting. The solution was to provide a home that included specialized long-term care for those in need. Group homes are exempt from zoning in order to protect those long-term residential options. Residents seek to integrate into the community with appropriate modifications and assistance where needed. Some of these residents have jobs, some may travel to school, and many are contributing to, and contributing to and integrating with their communities. Group home residents are looking to put down roots in a sustained manner that is consistent with residential neighborhood. The transient patient model of sixty-to-ninety-day inpatient treatment term can hardly be compared to a long-term residential group home setting. By allowing the commercial exploitation of group homes by investment companies and the like, many individuals truly in need of a permanent long-term home are left out. These commercial enterprises are run to maximize profits where the patients are given a menu of concierge-style treatments to select from that provide additional income streams for the entrepreneur. Patients are solicited for additional services by the entrepreneur at an expanded cost to the patient customer. Properties are purchased as real estate investments to add to the portfolio, and the full business model operates in the pursuit of maximum profits as the ultimate goal. To these investment companies, helping the people with long-term assisted residential living is almost, is almost treatment as an unfortunate byproduct of their healthcare money-making machine. These investments companies and medical facilities joint ventures, especially the ones that do not accept Medicare, are blocking access to lower-income individuals.
Mr. Stern, can you summarize your final comments?
Sure.
Thanks.
In short, the long-term group home residents, the commercialization of their homes result in a more burdensome cost of living and limits the freedom to openly access services provided as they wish. It defeats the very intention of the group home protections, which was to ensure a freedom of residential choice to protect long-term residential use. In short, this is simply not a home. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Ally Kernan, and I've been a Fairfield resident for twenty years now. Residential mental health support for young adults is absolutely a need right here in this town. When I left, undiagnosed and untreated symptoms of mental health disorders, when left undiagnosed and untreated symptoms of mental health disorders can be extremely challenging to manage. People then result in unhealthy and risky behavior and coping skills. Several of my classmates started experimenting with substances as a remedy and other types of behavior, which unfortunately led them to be a victim of the horrifying international opioid epidemic and elevating suicide rate. At twenty-eight years old, I have attended more funerals of my childhood friends, all from this town, than graduations and weddings combined. I have been directly impacted by mental health and substance use disorders as a friend, sibling, daughter, and myself. I, too, was experiencing what my classmates and neighbors were, yes, neighbors. I became an IV heroin user only one year after graduating Fairfield Ward High School in 2010. My use did not start with the first substance in my body, but instead the years and years of untreated mental health disorders. The consequences I faced living a dangerous lifestyle have had severe and permanent impact in my life. I have been homeless, hungry, and hopeless. I became convicted of five felonies at the age of twenty-one and was sentenced to prison at the age of twenty-two, right here in Fairfield. After my sentence, I received the bare minimum of community support for my integration back into society, you know, the kind of things that everyone's here is talking about, the medicated, accepted places. After, again, the vicious cycle was starting all over again, I had learned in a treatment program that was in prison that my mental health disorder symptoms steer the ship of my overall wellness and recovery. After a relapse due to not having that community support, I finally sought treatment, but I needed services as soon as possible, which meant as close as possible. Pending a suicide attempt, the only place that I was able to get services was right around in this area. It's an agency that was housed minutes away and served the entire greater Bridgeport area and anyone in the state of Connecticut. I went from suffering in my neighborhood to recovering in my neighborhood. I wanted, I wanted to give back to the same community, so I decided to accomplish my goals of graduating college and becoming a counselor. I am now employed by that very same agency that chose to hire me, and I now serve the same people that live in this town. Some people I even used with buried their loved one or simply just knew while I was growing up. If what Newport Academy is trying to bring to Fairfield existed while I was in high school, my young adulthood would have not looked this way at all. It would have looked completely different, a lot more safe and a lot more stable. I would be visiting my loved ones and clients in a supportive home rather than a plot at a gravesite. The only way that Fairfield can support mental wellness for the next generation is to come together as a community and welcome people with disabilities as someone did for me.
I'm going to ask that you summarize your final comments.
Yep, got the last one right here. Please be mindful that this very same audience advocating for scholarships are the ones that had no issue donating thousands and thousands of dollars to fight Newport Academy. In fact, the amount of funds donated to fight them could have funded about fifteen humans for a five-day detox. I can't help but question the true reasonings behind these statements of Medicare population will not be served. Barriers that were brought up here a lot today were from people-- Barriers that were brought up here a lot today were from people that claim to want to remove them but are causing a silent barrier in our community, which they may seem one way in front of all of you, but behind closed doors, I have personally watched stigmatizing language choice be used to identify these people with disabilities. I can now personally identify as a daughter, sister, friend, and counselor instead of a junkie, addict, crazy person, ex-con, or criminal. Let's make it possible for the next ally to find healing right in our backyard.
Thank you. Hi.
My name is Sabine Edgett, and I'm not on one side or the other. I came here pretty open-minded, and I have to say I have some serious concerns. First among them is that everybody that stood at this podium has discussed substance abuse. None of them did. That's a problem, because if you're going to focus to the public your mental health work and ignore that, it makes us question what else you want us to ignore. My other problem is that the CEO said only twenty percent of the patients at Bethlehem come from Connecticut. If you've identified a need in Connecticut, you treat the need in Connecticut. You don't import a need from somewhere else. And not with the specific locations that they've chosen, but locations in general. I would think, being the caregiver of someone with mental illness, a veteran who's fought for this country, who knows many veterans in your age group of eighteen to twenty-six with mental illness, I would think that when you look at a location, you would want it to be a safe location for those people. And I would think that you, as a board, would consider the location for no other reason than its safety. Someone with severe depression and suicidal ideation who decides to go for a walk at two o'clock in the morning can get lost in a wooded area. They can fall into a pool and drown. They can wander down the street and never be heard from again. These are considerations that need to be part of your decision-making. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Elizabeth Hurlick, and I live in Hartford, Connecticut with my husband and four children. Two of my children struggle with anxiety and depression. My seventeen-year-old son has been treated for anxiety and depression since middle school and struggled in high school with all of the pressures facing teens today. This past summer, we decided that he needed more treatment than we could provide him at home and began looking for a dual-diagnosis residential treatment program. At a time of terrifying uncertainty for our family, we had to deal with the lack of available beds and too few programs that could address the specific needs of teenagers with mental health and substance abuse issues. Only two programs were within driving distance of our home, which was important to us as we wanted to be involved in our son's treatment. Newport Academy worked closely with us and our insurance and was able to find a placement for our son. In fact, they worked so closely with our insurance and a single-case agreement that took less than four hours when a bed became available. The experience we had at Newport was incredible. From the get-go, the staff was amazing. They took my angry and closed-off son and assured him they would be with him every step of the way. They worked closely with us to ensure that the whole family was part of the healing process so that when my son came home, we would be able to fully support his recovery. It was critical that we were able to participate in this process in person. Many people are aware of the crisis facing so many of our teenagers, but they think it couldn't happen to them, and they don't know someone who's been through it because of stigma. Well, you know me and my family. We have faced this crisis, and we've come through the other side. My son is clean and sober and will graduate from high school on time and has already been accepted to several colleges to study film. His success and wholeness as a family is thanks to Newport Academy. And if I could have just a little more time, I'll read what he was going to say. He couldn't come. Is that okay?
We still have time left.
It's short, okay. My name is Etan Hurlick. I never thought that I would need the services and help that Newport Academy offers. In my senior year of high school, I continued with my habits of shoving aside my stress and anxiety, depression, with bad habits and coping mechanisms, specifically abusive cannabis, distancing myself from my family, and many more detrimental things. After a few years of this, my entire self was so sick of it, I fell off the cliff of motivation and emotionally checked out at home. If it weren't for my parents seeing the struggle and taking action, I would not have gotten the help I needed. This is a systemic issue across the United States, and when it comes to treatment centers for youth and teens, there aren't enough beds and professionals to help everyone who needs them. I support the approval of another Newport Academy center so that teens like me can succeed, graduate on time, rebuild a strong family relationship, and find their path in life, free of substances, debilitating anxiety, and immense depression. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, no, it's a drag. My name is Mark Richards of Burr Street in Fairfield, just a neighbor. So two things I'd like to talk about: financials and regulation. Financials, I went through this with my, my child for two and a half years. Therapeutic high schools, Georgia, West Virginia, the woods, second nature, bad therapeutic high schools, not regulated, real problem. Paying eighty to a hundred thousand dollars a year, no insurance. After three years, she's okay now, which is great, but it was a massive amount of effort from our part, so, you know, hearing the stories is unbelievable. But the fact is kind of scary that this, these places aren't regulated to some degree, and that's the question I would ask you. Because, you know, you're a parent, everything looks good, you sign the check, give out a hundred thousand dollars, fifty, you know, per semester, and then you're in a, you know, crazy place with the therapy's not good, the academics are weak, it's just, it's just, it's just terrible. So this is, so the question do you, I would ask, is there any kind of governing body from the state of Connecticut that would review these types of group homes, medical institutions, medical facilities, whatever you want to call them?
You're asking me?
You.
I have, I don't know.
I think it's, I think it's an important question, that's all, because, you know.
Do you want us to answer?
Do you want us to answer?
I'll let them answer since they are apparently, they apparently know better than I would.
Sure. So our Bethlehem campus is regulated by the Department of Children's and Families.
Okay. Well, that's important, because we, we came across, as we're all, our parents were talking, we all talked about weak ones and terrible ones and all up and down the eastern seaboard. So this is very, very important. The other thing, you know, I'm like three doors down from this proposed facility on Congress Street, the Hillman Residence, is that, do you need cameras? Do you need security personnel? Personnel. Also to add the point is, my child didn't get healed in forty-five days, didn't get healed in sixty days, got healed in two and a half years. That's the average time. It does take a long period of time to, to, to get through these, these thick stones and stuff like that. Um, you know, do you agree with me? Because you mentioned forty-five day stay, but...
Our, so our treatment model's very different than a second nature and then a long-term residential. That's a totally different type of treatment for an adolescent or a young adult. What we're looking at is really the beginning of the chapter of recovery in a licensed, JCO-accredited facility.
Okay, and my child had no meds, they weren't using any meds, and they had no addiction, which is, you know, important. You don't have to deal with that, but, so, it's, it's, we know the problem is huge with opioids and everything else that's out there. And the town of Fairfield Police Department had no power to help your fifteen-year-old daughter. They'd just say, get it out of there, you know? So, but it's, the problem is so massive that if you don't help your daughter, your son, they're gone.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for your time. Before we have additional testimony, we're gonna take a ten-minute break. I just want to make sure that we, yeah, yes, I just want to make sure, no, I just want to make sure that I am alert enough to listen to exactly what you're saying. I just need a fifteen, a ten-minute break, not a fifteen-minute break, a ten-minute break. Sure, sure. We'll read the names.
And forgive me if I screw some of these names up. Michael Parent, Monique Shukrain, Elizabeth Elrick, Robert Miller, and Susan Waters.
Thanks, we'll be back on at four o'clock. All right, I'm gonna ask the next person to come up. Ms. Greer's gonna call people again, just so that they are reminded of what order they're in.
Okay, so again, it was Michael Parent, Monique Shukrain, Elizabeth Elrick, Robert Miller, and Susan Waters.
Hello, my name's Michael. Thank you for giving me the time to speak. I'm a Fairfield resident. Growing up, I had, from a young, very young age, I was very insecure. I didn't feel like I fit in, and coming into high school, some of those issues got worse. I, my anxiety continually, continuously throughout high school got worse and worse, and I had some onset depression my freshman year, and then near the end of my freshman year, I started using substances because I found that they took away some of this discomfort and anxiety, and things kind of progressed from there. My sophomore year, I had a suicide attempt. I ended up at a mental hospital. I went to a couple other psych wards for suicidal plans and thoughts, and then it all kind of came to a climax. My junior year, I had a overdose, and I ended up at St. Vincent's Hospital. I had alcohol overdose. They had to pump my stomach. It was not pleasant. But I had done many programs, IOPs. Leading up to this, in my junior year, I went to St. Vincent's Psych Ward, psychiatric, and from there, I went to Newport. Now, while I was at the hospital there, I had been there for a couple weeks, and there was a twelve-day wait for a bed in the Connecticut area, so I ended up going all the way to California because the new center had opened up there, it was Newport. But that, I mean, I didn't mind it too much, except for the fact that since it was so far away, it was around Christmas time, my parents couldn't come up for Christmas, which was sad. But I actually started to, actually heal at Newport where I couldn't have other ones just because of the amount of resources that were available to me. I, I had regular appointments with my social worker and therapist. I could see them whenever I asked to, not immediately, but sometimes I'd wait. It was very accessible to me. The staff there, the care coordinators were exceptional. I, I really appreciated them and the help that they gave me. And coming into Newport, I had barely any social skills. The year leading up to my overdose, I had lost most of my friends. I would spend most of my time in my room, and I really didn't know how to communicate with people. And just through being around people that I felt connected to, I got to practice those social skills and kind of build my, my mental health.
I'm gonna ask that you summarize what you want to say and finalize it.
And the thing is, is that it's right, the person who said that you don't get completely healed in fifty days is right, because that's not how it worked for me. What really worked is all the stuff I was introduced in Newport. I, I started working out, that continued, I worked out for every day for the next year, which was very helpful to my mental health. I got introduced to AA meetings, which I go to almost every day. And the, in the Fairfield area, there are about seventy meetings a day all week, and these are all meetings that kids and young adults can get plugged into while they're in Connecticut, and when they get out, they already have all these meetings, which is essential.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you again, I'm sorry, but thank you so much for your comment.
Hi, my name's Monique Shukrain. I moved to Fairfield in two thousand and one, and I have a son who's at Fairfield Ward High School and another son who's in a group home for adolescents that are dealing with mental health and substance abuse issues. I wanted to talk a little bit about my experience with Newport Academy and why I think there's a desperate need for places that provide affordable, high-quality care for our young people who are dealing with mental health. At about fifteen, my son started showing signs of severe depression, anxiety, and the beginnings of dependency. We worked with the mental health care providers here in town and with the school system to get support and treatment, but progress was slow, and we made the difficult decision that we could not keep him safe or healthy in our home. And the healthcare providers, who we had grown to trust, suggested Newport Academy. The school system was very familiar with them, and we were able to make it work from a financial perspective. This idea that the not-for-profits are more accessible is simply not true. There are very few that are really operating as charitable organizations. They're running businesses as a not-for-profit. Their staff and executives are highly paid, and they charge two thousand dollars a day, and they don't accept insurance. Newport accepts insurance, and they made it work. We used both ends of their spectrum for the inpatient care that my son initially required. We went to California, because California did require that they have be inpatient, in-network there, and we were able to use the insurance. I would love to see a requirement that Newport get in-network with providers in the state of Connecticut. I'm glad that you've been working on it. Keep working on it, make it happen. I agree with the people who said that that's important. It's important. But Newport, even without that, is still accessible. We also used their single-player providers when my son came back to Darian under partial hospitalization program. They worked with us to make it affordable, they kept us on, and they worked with us when we realized that my son needed more. They helped us find the next place. That's really resonated when you talked about that. We also found that there was a question earlier about, you know, how do you keep the, the patients there? How do you make sure that they stay? Those care coordinators, your answer about that, it really resonated with me. My son came back talking about those care coordinators. They connected with him. The quality of care from Newport is high all around, but those care coordinators were really, really special. And I just want to talk about the need here in Fairfield. The planning and zoning meeting was in the Board of Education. I've sat in that room time and time again advocating for Fairfield, and I've listened to the yearly report that the town of Fairfield does on the, a survey that they do of our middle school and high school students, asking them about a number of issues, and I've heard in Fairfield, the rates of anxiety, depression, self-harm, and marijuana use increase year in and year out. I've listened to that report. It's here in our town. We need affordable care like Newport can provide.
Who is next?
Robert Miller.
Robert Miller? Robert Miller?
Susan Waters.
Before I start my time, can I just say that this room was full of people who wanted to talk, I think, and this has not been the best forum for that. Just from a personal standpoint, not my testimony, I came here with a sick kid. My husband came to pick up my sick kid, to take him home so that I could stay and meet my other kids after school. So this has not been pleasant for anybody, no matter who is testifying, the length of time. It's been unfortunate. So if you would still give me my three minutes, I would appreciate it.
Take them.
Thank you very much. So my name is Susan, and I am the parent of two children with chronic disorders and a husband with a chronic disorder. So when we talk about insurance, that's pretty, I'm really, I'm in it, okay? I am in it. Okay, I am in it. So I understand that. And there are some things that I don't understand that I've been listening intently to the testimony. And I don't have the answer, so I'm gonna ask some questions. But I don't, I know the answers may not be provided. But I have really good insurance. And when I take my chronically, my chronic children or husband to an in-network provider, they pay 80% of that for a, for a visit. And then I pay copays and things. And when I take them to an out-of-network, they pay 40% of the allowable. So there's a lot of money that I end up having to pay, which I'm happy to pay it, and I'm fortunate to pay it. And I think most of us in this room, at some point, are fortunate enough to pay it. But I'm concerned about some of the statements made on the, this, the position here at the table of Newport Academy. And then also, some of the things that were uncovered by the neighbors group that said Newport is covered 97%. I'm just not sure how that's possible for things that like this. So I think that we need to get to the bottom of that. Because if they're working with special insurance companies, then I need to go to those ones. Secondly, I don't understand, I know they have experience in the 18, I mean, in the under-18 area. But I don't understand the discharge rates for the 18 to the 23, since that is, since that is an adult and you can self-discharge. And I would like to know how that turns over the residency, if you would like to call it that, of 60 days, 30 days, 90 days or so. And then also, I think the application was for six people per home. And, you know, the one thing is, I have a lot of friends and family members and people that I know that have autistic children and disabled children. And that truly also is an epidemic. And I think that one of the things we haven't truly considered is how, if we grant the status of group home, that will affect the limited availability to autistic and disabled children in our community, who, there is a growing need for those children to provide care for them at a much lower price, that they don't have insurance to cover it and things like that. That is a serious, and I think that our laws and our groups, or the group home, and these has been, was put in place to honor those people and other people with problems, but is being manipulated. And that concerns me. And I think that I sit here fortunate to speak because I am in this community and I have some resources. But it feels to me like some people got well, and I am so thankful to God that they did. And I hope that they never go back to that point. I want that for everybody. But it feels like a community, an organization with lots of power and lots of money and lots of wealth is touting out the success stories and not talking about the countless, countless failures and groups of people who aren't being served by this. If they serve six people at a time, what happens to the other people that don't have insurance, that have already gone bankrupt from their issues, are going in financial disasters? And I think that we may just be duped here. We just might be being duped for the investors and the law firms and the well-paid doctors.
I'm gonna ask that you summarize your final statements.
I just want to thank you for my time. And I want to thank you for the people and the courage that they spoke. And I trust that you will make the right decision.
Thank you.
Okay, we found Justin Spencer. If he'd come up, please.
Justin Spencer?
Yes. So Justin Spencer, then we'll have Scott Typhonhaller, Ann Ward, Dr. Deborah Lipskitz, and Gregory Taylor.
Thank you very much.
Hi.
Sorry, just give me a minute here. My name's Justin Spencer, and I'm here today representing a resident of Fairfield and Neighbors for Neighborhood Preservation. Hearing members, I wanted to highlight Newport Academy's inconsistency. The fine service area plans of out-of-service and out-of-state residents concessions are no public need of the interest. Throughout the CON application process, Newport Academy has, at best, inconsistently identified service area proposed by the mental health residential living centers. As we previously mentioned today, at one of the, at one point, Newport identifies the service area comprised of 46 towns in Connecticut and a service-based area and facility that is specifically here in Bethlehem. We've also discussed that the majority of the patients coming from Fairfield County also reside in New York, New Jersey, and other areas throughout the United States. It's also interesting that Newport Academy, while cast, they want to cast a wider net, they also portray that they're within one mile of an international airport. That just seems interesting to me. Currently, the only program that they're proposing is 18- to 26-year-olds. And so far today, I haven't heard any data that backs up with what they're saying contributes directly to 18- to 26-year-olds that are here in Fairfield, Connecticut. They also mentioned Turnbridge, which they, which also offers a program post-90 days of in-care, or, sorry, out-of-care, in-home support, which I don't believe that Newport has. Quickly moving along, a big thing that I think we want to stress is the, is the aspect of insurance. And they failed to really diagnose the difference between in-network and out-of-network. And I think Susan portrayed that, what type of care is that? And if it's out there, then she needs to find it because there are some things that she needs to deal with. The landscape as a whole with insurance is very hard to work with. And having that, that post-care is very difficult. Finally, I just want to close with, really, the character that we've seen with Newport Academy, but I would say more so with the Carlyle Group. In the summer of 2019, Newport Academy struck a deal with the Neighbors of Fairfax, Virginia, which are going through a similar situation as we do to take down lawn signs, to disperse a Facebook group, to basically calm down all the noise. The Neighbors listened. They wanted to be good neighbors. About six weeks later, they completely turned on the Neighbors and doubled down on their efforts to expand their efforts, similarly with zoning laws, but we're not going to get into that. Why'd they do that? They just didn't want bad press. As of yesterday, some of the press that has been here posted three articles, or posted several articles on multi, multiple different sides of the argument, for and pro. If you were to take a look right now and do a Google search of Newport Academy, you'll notice that all of the pro on our side have been suppressed. When you just look at the overall character, Newport Academy. Do a Google search. Am I gonna interact with this?
No, 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 no.
This was, this was my time.
You're, I'm looking, the timekeeper just said that your time's low, most of. Can you just summarize what you're gonna say?
Just, lastly, if you just look at the track record, that, that mental health and private equity coming in on a macro level, this is a very microcosm. There's an epidemic that private equity firms are exploiting. And this is just one case that could get significantly out of hand before it gets better. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Scott, I heard Typhonhaller? Tiffenheller? Sorry about that. Is Scott here? Someone knows Scott? Okay, thank you.
Ann Ward?
Ann Ward? Hi.
Yeah, I'm a mom. I only represent me. And I, between me, my four children, we know about 20 kids who died.
Hold on one moment. Can everybody in the back here, I'm, yeah. Just move the microphone a little bit closer. Just a little bit closer. You had moved it up.
Right, okay.
There you go.
Start my three minutes over. So, I'm a mom. Between my four kids, we know, we came up with like 23 names of children who have died. And I spoke at one of the services because my son couldn't be here for his friend. However, that said, I don't think that these people have proven that there is a sufficient need for an additional young adult residential treatment center. So I have this, which is 13 pages of only young adult treatment centers in Fairfield County, which I could give you all. It lists Mountainside. It lists Turnbridge. All of these are near us. And I can give you that. And they're amazing places. They have riding. They have foresting, going through the forest. They're just fantastic places. In addition, we just learned that there may not be a need if these people are saying that they are treating at Bethlehem, or is that the right place? They're only treating 11 kids from Connecticut. And the rest of the, what would it be, 44 are from outside the state. So I am not convinced that there is a need. I think that there, that what we need to do is find out, why don't we take, why don't we figure out what's at Lancaster? That should be Connecticut, should it not? Whatever happened to the Southbury Training School? There are plenty of places, I think, other than having someone. I mean, if I could name this problem, I would say Carlyle's takeover of currently undervalued residential properties in Greenfield Hill. I think that's the problem. And I think it's the tip of the iceberg. So I don't think of established the need for another privately-owned teen residential mental health care facility. I think there's something nefarious going on. And I know that you guys have to approve a certificate of need. I also know that you all are required, you're called CON, is that right?
C-O-N, yeah.
C-O-N. That CON is required to consider all the elements in this 19A639.
Right.
Right. Also, to monitor the impact on the communities impacted. I don't know how long that's supposed to take or what period. I also know that you all are responsible or that certain types of healthcare providers are, you all are responsible for having them obtain state approval prior to making changes, major changes, in the healthcare landscape, which to me is very vague. Don't know what that means.
I'm gonna ask you to summarize your comments. And I just want to also point out, too, if there's something that you or anyone else in the room want to submit, you can give them to Ms. Greer, and we will make sure we upload them to the portal. So it'll be in the record.
So, the major changes that you guys have to obtain approval for are mergers, capital investment. Your job is to prevent the duplication. You know, I mean, I'm looking at the Reading Road property that's 11 acres. It's all undervalued. It's 11 acres. Some of it's wetland. But once you give, I'm thinking of something wicked this way comes or something nefarious. If you give a bunch like the Carlyle Group access to 11 acres, how on earth are we going to know or prevent or stop some kind of huge development that they might decide to do later on?
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Dr. Lipskitz? Gregory Taylor.
Hi.
Good afternoon.
How are you?
I'm well, and you?
Good.
Thanks so much for allowing me a few moments. I'll be quite brief. So my name is Gregory Taylor. I'm a lifelong Connecticut resident. And notwithstanding the creative use of numbers and percentage in today's testimony, Newport's application and submissions are replete with material admissions, inaccuracies, and inconsistencies, warranting a denial of their application based on need. Here are the most, three most material failures. Failure one, Connecticut need. Newport has failed to demonstrate that the two proposed facilities with a total of 12 beds will serve Connecticut residents. Newport's website lists all its facilities throughout the country, including the Bethlehem, Connecticut facility, and illustrates that Newport has a nationwide service area and that its services are not targeted to Connecticut residents or Connecticut-based need. Number two, Newport's submissions show that existing Bethlehem, Connecticut facility serves many, majority, out-of-state residents. In the most recent submission to the CON, Newport provided letters, 13 of the 15 letters that were provided, that's 86%, are from alumni family members submitted by Newport. Those are out-of-state submittals. Newport stated in its filings that the proposed facilities will serve clients from throughout Connecticut, as well as New York, New Jersey, and from throughout the US. I think that's a true statement. Failure number two, incomplete or irrelevant comparative service provider waitlists. The waitlist data for the Bethlehem facility that was submitted by Newport is at least partially, if not mostly irrelevant, to the evaluation of the claim need for the proposed Fairfield facilities. Why? The data includes prospective patients who are not Connecticut residents. The Bethlehem facility serves only 13 to 20, while the proposed facility will serve, will not serve anyone under the age of 18. And lastly, the Bethlehem facility does not serve adults in the 21 to 26 age group, which would be part of the group served by the proposed facilities. Although it states that Connecticut patients will be from throughout Connecticut, Newport has limited its comparative list of mental health and substance use facilities, even though the other facilities offer treatments of the same conditions as Newport to the same patients, and that demographic overlaps in Newport's age range. And lastly, it has failed to address a broader geography of other mental health and substance use facilities throughout Connecticut that also offer overlapping services to an overlapping age demographic. Failure number three, final point. Newport has played fast and loose on the dual diagnosis and substance use patients. Newport has been inconsistent in characterizing the apportionment of its treatment of primary mental health disorders versus substance use disorders and single versus dual diagnoses, from a vast majority in one early submission to 10% more recently. Or quite clearly, whatever the most appropriate, as opposed to accurate, answer is at the moment to the OHS question at hand. The question is whether Newport must be licensed for substance use, which every earlier version of their submitted documentation would clearly support. And it seems obvious, they most recently downplayed the percentage of treatment programs to avoid licensure. I was gonna add a fourth point, but it's irrelevant to the CON. And that is that I believe Newport fails any duty of care and safety to its patients as the proposed facilities are unfenced, ungated, and are on major thoroughfares, highly trafficked seats. And in summary, through its filing, through its filings, Newport has attempted to shield its application from scrutiny by opposing my intervenor status. And it has attacked those who seek only to shine a light on the deficiencies of the application. These tactics do not overcome the fact that Newport has failed to establish a need for the facilities and that this request, this requires the denial of its application. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we would call Marjorie Glover, Barbara Mayer, Melissa Longo, Jeff Santo, and Rainey Nor.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi. Sorry, I get a little bit nervous at these things. And I had something that I prepared. And I know some things are off limits. But I'd still like to say something on behalf of my family. And also, if I might have a minute, to speak on behalf of my son, who's not able to speak here today. I'm Marjorie Glover. My husband Charlie Glover and I and our four children live directly across the street from 3236 Congress Street. Our daughters attend the local elementary school. Our daughter, older daughter attends the high school. And we live at home with our 24-year-old, young adult son. Our son Charlie Jr. was born severely disabled, is intellectually and medically disabled, non-verbal, has the mind of a small child, and lives with us at home. We've cared for him since birth, and we're committed to caring for him in our home for the rest of our lives. We bought our home eight years ago. It was a stretch for us financially. We used our life. We learned, our plan was always to have this home to raise our children and then leave it to him as a group home along with other people with disabilities, intellectual, mental health, autism. We learned last year that this home is being now proposed to be used as a group home, and I'll explain why this is relevant. There's a law, as you probably know, in Connecticut that prohibits two group homes from being within 1,000 feet of each other. So if they use group home status, my son will be forced to move. My son is severely disabled. He's an adult. He's a Medicare recipient. He receives Husky insurance, DDS in-home services. People on our farm receive services as well. And so this impacts the ability for people from Connecticut and our town to live in our community. And we've been told to put him on a waiting list, that someday he might need it because he can't live in our home anymore. And that the waiting list is decades long and that understandably priority is given to those adults with disabilities who lose their elderly parents. So my husband and I know that our heartbreaking reality will be that the last of us to die will know, that we won't know where our son is going to live, that he'll wonder where his mom and dad are and where his mom is, where his home is. And I don't think this is right. I don't think it is right to take away homes from people with long-term disabilities and in the community setting. And why is this relevant? Because it's taking away care for those people, including people with mental illness that are receiving in-home care. So it's effectively diverting the medical resources to those Connecticut residents that are our most vulnerable, those with intellectual disabilities, autisms, and mental illness. And I think that the parents and people with disabilities and the state agencies such as DDS that protect and provide for them should be made aware of this because it is affecting the resources. And if I may say one last thing on behalf of my son, who cannot speak, but I think if he could, he'd wonder why his right to live in the community where he's being raised is any less valuable or worthy than people who come from out of state and live across the street for a week or a month. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Barbara Mayer?
My heart goes out to the parents and the kids who feel they have nowhere to turn to get the help that they need to fight their addictions.
Can everybody hear? Okay.
Okay, here we go. Is that better?
Yep.
My heart goes out to the parents and the kids who feel they have nowhere to turn to get the help that they need to fight their addictions. From what I have read about Carfile, Carlyle's for-profit treatment facilities, I have concerns that they are taking advantage of that need to the detriment of that community and to the detriment of our community. If we're going to allow Newport Academy to open the facilities, we need to be sure that they are going to be good neighbors. Both the manner, stealthiness, and aggressiveness with which they came into our community leads me to believe that they are not good neighbors. And after reading about other facilities in Connecticut, I have real concerns about the professionalism of their staff and their ability to ensure the safety of their young clients. I've heard stories about clients that have escaped the facilities. I've seen online reviews written by parents who said they were not immediately informed when their children ran away and were found later in the woods. I live directly behind the proposed Reading Road property with my 93-year-old mother, and hearing that story gives me great concerns about our safety. If the facility is allowed to become part of our community, and I hope I'm wrong about their ability to successfully treat these young clients, if I'm right, however, the impact would be catastrophic for property values in the neighborhood and in moving forward to sell the home, which we've lived in for 25 years. Thank you for the opportunity to share my concern.
Thank you. Did I say your name correctly?
Yes. My name is Jeff Santo, and I'm a state-certified recovery support specialist. I am also the webmaster for rockingrecovery.org. And what that website, its primary purpose is to help people who need services find them. And it started out with mental health and addiction, and right now we're over 1,000 different resources, from food banks to veterans assistance to transportation assistance. And I really do have my finger on the pulse of the services that are available in the state of Connecticut. Now, we had a couple of legislative representatives come up here and talk about zoning, but what they didn't tell you is that over the past decade, the Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services has had their budget cut by 17%. So while the state cuts funding to mental health services, that opens the door for private people to come in and set up for-profit practices because they are filling a niche. Now, whether that's the right thing to do or the wrong way to handle it, I'm not going to stand here and argue that. But I heard a lot of people toss around numbers, insurance, how much different levels of care costs. At the Connecticut Valley Hospital, which is a state-run facility, for one bed for one patient, it's $560,000 a year, according to the Connecticut Mirror, and the staff ratio to clients is 10 times worse than in a private facility. I will put that out there. As far as numbers, I want to draw your attention to the numbers that we are fighting in the mental health field every day. The mental health and addiction services system in this country is broken, and it's been broken for years and it's not getting any better. And I wish the people who, sorry, I wish the people who showed up here today would show up in Hartford when the state wants to further cut our funding for Demus. Because your voices, as powerful as they are here, will make more of a difference up there. And if the state can open up more beds up there, we wouldn't be having conversations like this. We lose, well, according to the statistics, for every secondary school we have in this country, one young adult will attempt suicide. There are 34,000 secondary schools in this country. That means I could fill Yankee Stadium with the number of young adults that will attempt suicide this year, and there'll be 10,000 more in the parking lot waiting to get in because they couldn't find a seat. We had someone speak about veterans. We lose 16 veterans every single day of the week, and on average, four active-duty service personnel and reservists. In 2018, we started a wonderful new trend in this country. For some reason, we started losing more firefighters and police officers to suicide than we did in line-of-duty deaths. We are losing this fight. Now, whether an inpatient treatment facility like this is appropriate, that's not for me to decide, but what you need to decide is what's best for your community and the population that you serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Rainey Noor.
That's how you say it? Said Rainey?
Rainey.
That's okay. Close enough.
Sorry.
No worries. Well, good afternoon, Hearing Officer Mitchell and the commissioner as well. As to all of who made the time to be here today, I know it's, everybody's kind of filtering out by now, but thank you for hosting today's public hearing for the certificate of needs application by Newport Academy and for the work that you do. As you know, my name is Rainey Noor, and I've been a resident of Fairfield for the past two decades. As a mom of four young adults aged 16 to 22, I'm an active volunteer in our town's schools, our town's substance use prevention council, Fairfield Care's Community Coalition, and I serve on our town's juvenile review board. My remarks today represent my own personal opinion, and I do not speak on behalf of any organization I'm a part of, nor am I going to tell you how you should rule in this application and the minute details of how it was completed. I have no idea about these. I'm simply here to tell you that I have seen the tremendous need for quality mental health and substance use disorder treatment options in our town and beyond. Too many of my children's peers and friends have seen their lives derailed or even cut short by untreated mental health or substance use disorders. My two older children, Julia and Daniel, have lost friends to death by suicide and overdose. My younger children in high school, Melissa and Sammy, have friends suffering with mental health disorders and substance use disorder. Fairfield lost five residents to fatal overdoses last year. Five. I know of neighbors and friends who have had to travel great distances to seek treatment for their children. I have also seen that recovery from the disease of substance use disorder and mental illness is possible. And as we all know, there's a parity law in Connecticut that mental health diseases are treated just the same as physical diseases. And it was a heart-wrenching testimony when I heard from the mother earlier today, who was speaking how if her child had a regular disease, there would have been sympathy and casseroles, but because it was substance use disorder, she was shunned. But recovery from the disease of substance use disorder and mental illness is possible, and I'm proud to call many individuals in the recovery community my friends. They are leading productive and happy lives as contributors to society. If you had been at Summerfest in Fairfield last May, you would have seen close to 300 people having an awesome time at a sober concert, celebrating prevention and recovery, and a hashtag life not wasted. Being able to have fun together at a concert is a lot better than attending funeral services for a young person who died by suicide or overdose. We also have a overdose awareness vigil that we've had twice in Fairfield and will have another one this August. And the testimony we hear there illustrates the great need in this community. Access to quality care that treats young people with dignity as human beings searching for connection and purpose will save lives. I certainly expect that any provider who establishes a group home setting in our, or any town abides by any local, state, and federal laws regulating them, and I would expect oversight of the home once established. I would also hope that any business offering treatment is required to become an in-network provider and accept a wide range of insurances, including Husky, as well as offer significant scholarships for the un- or underinsured. While my personal focus is on prevention and empowering young people to make healthy choices as well as support parents and families, quality treatment and support in recovery are equally important.
I'm gonna ask that you summarize your final statements.
One sentence. Prevention aims to reduce need, while treatment and recovery need to be available to meet the remaining need. Thank you for providing the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
These last four individuals will conclude my list. Amy Parent, Susan Gally, Lyndon Cronin, and Elizabeth Bennett.
Hi. Thanks for having me and for the patience of the room. My name is Amy Parent. I am a Fairfield resident, and I am a proud mom. You saw my son earlier, and he has made incredible strides and credits, he credits Newport Academy for making those strides, to setting the foundation that he then continued treatment. Briefly my story, he had three hospitalizations. We tried to, we checked out SoulNet. SoulNet had an eight-week waiting list. That's state-run. We were also told without being Husky, we would be deprioritized. We tried ICAPS, which was the in-home intensive, to try to get into that program, but again, we're told because we were not Husky qualified, we could not participate in that program. It was only private pay. So that addresses the fact that there are programs that sort of what you would call the donut hole can't actually access. So I'm a teacher, my husband's an IT manager. We're not highly affluent, but we also don't need Medicaid. And so what we really need is high-quality care in this region. When SoulNet didn't work out and ICAPS didn't work out and we needed residential care, Bethlehem was full. We needed a program that addressed mental illness and that served a dual diagnosis situation. Mental illness is what drove the substance. So if we don't address the root cause, which is the mental illness, then overcoming the substance abuse becomes a much more difficult issue. There are very few programs that are dedicated to that dual diagnosis. Newport is one of them. When Bethlehem was full, we were sent, we were offered, and we went to Pleasanton, California. Pleasanton, California was a brand-new site, similar, large house, six-bed, boys-only, adolescent. What we found there were caring, amazing people that sent my son, as you heard, on his way. Pleasanton is similar to Fairfield. The house was among houses like we would find in Greenfield Hills. I understand neighbors' concerns, but you would never know that this was a residential program, and folks there were taken care of. And now we're talking about a population that's 18 to 24, or 19 to 24, and that population is so underserved. When we tried to, when we were looking for a bed for the third acute hospitalization, Yale was trying to put him into a ward that would have been for 17 to 35-year-olds. And the idea of my son spending Thanksgiving with a 35-year-old psychiatric patient made my heart sink. We need quality care for the very special demographic where they're not quite full adults with full executive function, but kids, youth, young adults that need that quality care and can be served. To speak about the insurance, yes, we had to go through a single-pay type of opportunity, but I will stand here today and tell you that the people, that I never spoke to my insurance company about any issues. Newport managed all of the insurance issues. They figure out the system. We paid our deductible, and the rest was completely paid by our insurance company. I have Oxford United Healthcare here in Connecticut, here in Fairfield, and they paid 100%. So they do do what they say, and the people were amazing. So in closing, and I know that's where you're coming.
Thank you.
I just want to say that there is a need. There is quality care that they offer. Yes, they're for-profit, but they care. I was on cellphone communication with executives because that's how much these people care. And I was a nobody. I was just some mom from Fairfield. So I just want you to know that we need it, having it in Fairfield, in our residential communities. I go to church in Greenfield Hills. It will be fine. And we, most important, that's why we're here, certificate of need, we need more quality health care in our community. So thank you for hearing me. Thank you for considering this, and I really do hope that you grant the certificate of need.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Susan Gally, and I'd like to just address a couple of things in the application that call into question the type of quality of care that you all might provide. The first is a gaping hole. And, you know, unfortunately, I understand these laws because I've had to deal with them, but the gaping hole is in regards to the child find laws. For those, you might not know them because you're in the medical field and not necessarily in the special education world, but those laws mandate that schools find children with disabilities. It's a legal requirement, and they need to find them so that they can determine whether or not they need special education services. So child find covers children ages birth through age 21. And from what I see, from what I read, I skimmed it, I didn't, you know, it's zillions of pages, there was nothing addressing any sort of coordination of care with Fairfield's special education department or, you know, Department of Education of the state. So to me, that's a glaring hole, and it certainly indicates to me that they don't understand disabilities. They're in the business of treating children with disabilities and this group, this niche, and they don't even have a basic understanding for the foundation of IDEA 2004, which is this child find provision. So that's the first thing. I'm very concerned that they don't understand what they need to do for these children. Secondly, is in regard to one of the exhibits, Exhibit Three. It actually happens to be their first exhibit in their application. And it is an exhibit that supposedly supports age and gender-specific residential therapeutic treatment for co- acquiring disorders. Unfortunately, toward the end of the article, it gives a definition of what a private residential treatment facility is. And it is, in regards to that article, it is 24/7, days a week, provided in a residential treatment setting for extended periods of time, which is up to six to 12 months. Well, their recommendation is 90 days. It completely falls outside of that article. Did their lawyers, their fancy expensive lawyers, just pull together some articles and throw them at the end as proof, just read the title? Just read the title? Because it tells me that they don't have a basic understanding of the actual study that was done, because it doesn't support their recommendation for care. In fact, it supports an opposite type of care, which is a six-to-12-month residential treatment facility. So I would ask that you read all the exhibits that they provide and all the supporting documents, because both of these things tell me that, you know something? What about their numbers? What about everything that they've presented? Is it accurate? Is it factual? Is it true? I don't really know. I don't have the time. It's not my job. My husband and I run a small business. We pay for our own insurance. And I recommend you go and try to buy your own insurance or just Google it on Access Health or Connecticut Care Private Insurance and see how much it would cost for a family of five, because it's $2,500 a month for a family of five. So we live about a mile from that facility that you're proposing on Reading Road.
I'm going to ask that you summarize your final statements.
Okay. We wouldn't be able to afford it. It would be cost prohibitive for us, because that would be about $30,000 in premium. It's out-of-network. It would be a $50,000 out-of-network deductible for us. And on top of that, I think they pay about 50%, the insurance company. So this is not cost-effective for people who live in town, who might unfortunately have a child that that needs these services. And that's it.
Thank you for your comment. Lynda Cronin?
Hi. Good afternoon.
Hi.
Or is it evening? I think I might have the unenviable position of being the last speaker, so I try to stay completely within your three minutes. I am Lynda Cronin, a 37-year Connecticut resident. 28 of those years are in Greenfield Hill area on Burr Street. I raised my family there while being a practicing civil rights attorney for 36 years. I had bore civil rights violations, specifically on the streets, in education, in health, and in housing. I'm quite familiar with NIMBY. This is not a NIMBY situation. It's not the case here at all that either I, and I suspect almost all of the persons that I've heard test, give testimony or give speeches today about this subject feel, and that's that we have the same mandate as you at the Office of Health Strategy, and that is to protect access for all Connecticut residents to cost-effective, quality healthcare. There was some comment made earlier today that the individual had suggested that those that were here for the neighbors' group should have spent the money they spent on organizing that grassroots effort, on putting some of the patients through this healthcare facility. This healthcare facility, these people spent $5.5 million to buy these multimillion-dollar properties. I submit to you that there's no question that this is a, certainly, a business endeavor on their part, and they're looking at the bottom-line cost. It is not cost-effective. Access here, they don't have Medicaid. You've already heard that 20% of Connecticut residents, you know better than we do, are on Medicaid. They don't have insurance. They tell you that 97% were from third-party payers. Listen to that language. Not from insurance. If it were simply 97% of those that went there used insurance, they would say that. They're saying they are third-party payers. That could be anybody. It could be an employer paying, it could be an aunt, an uncle, a grandparent, somebody paying for this third party. It's not self-pay in the sense that they're paying themselves. Furthermore, the question becomes whether or not they've significantly shown you substantial evidence of cost-effectiveness. There is no data that suggests that a $60,000 to $100,000 stay in this kind of facility is the most cost-effective. And I would submit to you that logically, it makes no sense. You've heard testimony today that most people can't afford this. I submit to you that probably 99% of the population in Connecticut cannot afford this. This is for the 1%ers. So if you're here with a mandate to be cost-effective in protecting quality healthcare with access to all that you can get, this is not the program. The quality has just not been given to you in any kind of data. The testimonials that they gave aren't or self-serving. The people that came here today to testify, the CEO, persons who are employed by Newport, that is not what I would submit to you as evidence that would qualify. Where are their statistics? Where are their medical experts? Where are their persons that can tell you where the regulations are that are in place and how they are regulated? With respect to the need, finally, I would tell you that they don't distinguish in any way, shape, or form between the mental health and substance abuse. Indeed, in a recent Connecticut post-op ed, their lawyer who wrote the op-ed never once used the term substance abuse in that entire op-ed. They can't produce data that reflects this particular program. This is critical. This program is new. This is for 18 to 26-year-olds. They don't have data to show you for that. So anything that they tell you is probably wholly and completely related to their Bethlehem facility.
I'm going to ask that you summarize your final statements.
Sure. You are a regulatory agency that is administered by the Department of Health. You are under the Connecticut state government. You have an obligation and a responsibility to consider the fact that the application before you is premised on a false statement. The application required compliance with local zoning. They applied to zoning as a group home. As a group home, they don't need a certificate of need. Then they apply to you for a certificate of need. You cannot ignore that fact. This is not a zoning issue. This is a falsehood. We cannot simply approve a certificate of need with the history of this kind of a falsehood. They need to adhere to all the laws and all of the regulations. We expect every operator of a healthcare facility to do that. They should be no different. This is a flagrant falsehood, and anybody knows who is dealing with civil rights and dealing with laws know that if you lie to me once about one thing, I can assume you're lying about everything. The fact that they haven't given you very much data to begin with is one thing. The fact that they came here on a false premise is something that requires you to dismiss this certificate of need.
Thank you. Any additional public comment?
I'm Dr. Elizabeth Brennan, and I first want to applaud all the patients, families, and people in recovery that came today. My pressing concern, however, is quality of healthcare and specifically trying to understand yours Newport's quality of care. I have lived in Fairfield for 50 years. I'm a physician. I'm an MD. I've been treating pain patients and now past 10 years been treating veterans coming back from Iraq and Afghanistan with mild traumatic brain injury PTSD. As a physician, I'm curious about the data you presented. In the CON that I read, presented, in terms of quality medical treatment, as far as I was able to understand, I could not find long-term, five-to-10-year outcome data. In the exhibits, all the articles that I could see were journal articles. In fact, all I saw were other studies, not yours. And I'm also not sure what you're defining as experts, qualifications, training, experience. The letters you submitted were simply one-paragraph sentences, largely written by non-MDs. One was written by an art therapist. I'm sure they have valuable experience. I'm not denying that. But I'm also, as the Burr Street resident mentioned, or somebody did, I'm trying to find opposing views, criticisms, and all I can find in Google is you, your name. I don't see anybody else. There were some parents that were unhappy. There's also the question of who truly does supervise you? Where is your oversight? To whom do you really report to in each place? And as the resident of Burr Street pointed out, this is important for everyone to know in medicine. There's really no good, long-term, successful data in these residential homes. We in medicine are indeed honestly operating in a black box when it comes to these programs from, as I'm trying to emphasize how valuable they are, in truly long-term outcomes. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Any additional public comment? All right, so we have a few additional questions for the applicant. We're just going to convene for about 10 minutes to get those questions together, and then we'll come back on the record. So it'll be 5:12 when we come back.
May we ask for 15 minutes?
Yeah, I have no problem with that. So we'll come back at 5:17.
All right, based on the public comment that I heard, I just have a couple of follow-up questions, and then I will let you give closing remarks, and we may have a late file or two. First question that I have, based upon what I heard from the public, are questions surrounding the amount of the scholarship that you plan to give to people who are unable to afford services for whatever reason. And then also, an assertion that you don't want to serve Medicaid. Can you talk about those two things? Can you respond to those two issues?
Sure. First off, I mean, service of Medicaid would require a change in policy by DSS and/or DMAS in terms of how they reimburse for-profit entities that provide the same level of care that Newport is intending to do.
When you say change in policy, what do you mean by that?
So we've contacted DSS, and we asked whether or not there is reimbursement available for our level of care, and we're told that that is not available to us at this time. And our understanding of DMAS is that they will do grant funding for nonprofits. We have, in the past, as I mentioned earlier, worked with DCF to do single-case agreements. Again, and there have been few, but we've done some with them.
And I think we asked this before, but can you, is it possible that you could also do that with people who are covered under Medicaid?
Sure, absolutely.
Are you willing to do that?
Yes.
And then what about the amount of the scholarship? I don't want to mischaracterize what I heard, but somebody, and this is not my statement, but someone said that it basically was a token. Like, can you respond to that, please?
Sure. I think if, for all the folks who took a deep dive into our application, you could see our operating margins, based on our budget, are fairly narrow. And so we dedicated a piece of those, that margin, back to the community. And we would do that in addition to the free care that we traditionally give at all of our Newport campuses, whether they be scholarships and/or extending stays when insurance runs out.
Everyone should be quiet in the audience. Thanks.
We also have hardship waivers. So when a family can't afford their copay or deductible, there's a process where they can appeal financial relief for those copays and deductibles. There's been a lot of conversation about affordability of our program. And I think I said in my opening remarks, our average out-of-pocket for a family in 2019 was $3,200.
Do you have any proof of that?
Sure. I mean, what type of proof would you like? Again, to provide you with the spreadsheet that I got from my finance office, would that suffice?
What's on the spreadsheet?
It just basically shows, I asked the question of our revenue team, what is the average out-of-pocket our clients have paid in the past year?
Can you give it to me for the past three years?
I think I can. I, you know, don't want to commit to something, again, that we don't financially have it maybe potentially tracked, but I can provide that to you. I would just ask, again, it is somewhat proprietary information, if there's a way to do that privately.
I don't know. Let me just ask, let me think about that. Let me just ask another follow-up question. That amount that you're talking about, the $3,200, that is for what, which programs?
That is for across the country. Across the country, all of our programs.
So I heard someone talk about being, someone purchasing their own insurance, that they were, you know, buying it directly, and they would have the inability to pay. And in a situation like that, where someone is having problems meeting, you know, the premiums and would probably not be able to pay a deductible, how do you work with them?
So again, I'll lean back to our financial hardship policy. So our admissions office would work with that individual family, and we would have them fill out that hardship policy and see where it landed in terms of financial relief. We look at 300 times the poverty level, and we look at, I think it's eight, it's 8%, 8.1, 8.2% of adjusted gross income. And then we also take a look at whether or not there's an immediate crisis in the family.
Do you ever turn people away who otherwise meet the criteria for admission because they can't pay?
We have turned away, I can tell you that 9% of our inquiries were excluded from treatment because of financial limitations. 9.5 last year.
And then what happens when they're turned away?
Carter's team jumps into play and helps find an adequate resource for them.
There was also an assertion that you're targeting affluent populations and that you're not interested in assisting kids who are involved in the juvenile justice system, maybe kids who are involved with child welfare. Can you speak to that?
Sure. I mean, we've done single-case agreements with other states that include those types of individuals. We are not targeting the affluent. I think I, again, earlier in my testimony, we treated only seven clients in the Bethlehem campus who were pure cash pay, and that's of 473 admissions last year. And I think across all of Newport, there were a total of 15 clients that were pure cash pay, and we've done 1,524 admissions last year.
You addressed this a little bit in your application, but can you talk about why you're not seeking licensure from the Department of Public Health to serve or provide services to people specifically with substance use disorders?
Sure. We have that capability at our Bethlehem campus. And today, you know, again, nationally, I apologize, I don't have it specifically for Connecticut, but about 6% of our clients who come to us for care are primary substance use clients. Another 21% are secondary or co-occurring substance use disorders. We have that capability in our Bethlehem campus. We decided that we were specifically going to focus on mental health diagnosis here in Fairfield, but that doesn't eliminate someone who has a co-occurring condition for substance use.
Is it your opinion that you can serve them as well without the DPH licensure?
I think we can, yes.
On what basis?
Based on our experience, as I think I mentioned earlier, 69% of the folks who come to us for care are primary diagnosis of major depressive disorder. 9% of them are anxiety disorders.
Have you had discussions with DPH facilities, licensing, and investigations unit to determine whether or not that's the case?
We have not, no.
And there were questions as well about regulatory oversight. You talked about the Bethlehem location being subject to oversight by the Department of Children and Families. Are there any other agencies that would be providing oversight of the programs, both of them?
Sure. So DPH, Department of Public Health, also will be licensing this individual facility. And we will obviously seek joint commission accreditation as well. In addition to those outside regulatory bodies that license us and supervise the care that we deliver routinely on an annual basis, sometimes every six months, we also have internally significant assets dedicated to compliance. We have a compliance office that looks at how we are living up to our standards that we set in our own policies and procedures. We have, our chief clinical officer works under the model of fidelity to the model. We ensure that the treatment program is being delivered as it's designed. She looks at all of our programs on a quarterly basis. And again, if there's any opportunities for improvement, we act on those. We have Carter, who's sitting to my left, who is our chief experience officer, and her job is to ensure that the client experience and the family experience meets the expectations that we set for ourselves. So we have a robust internal process, and then, of course, we're regulated by all the licensing bodies. And on top of that, we have joint commission. And then, of course, we're regulated by all the licensing bodies. And on top of that, we have joint commission oversight as well.
Someone also pointed out that your use of the waitlist at the Bethlehem location was irrelevant because of the fact that the age difference for, between that program and the proposed program is different. The age range, not the age difference, the age range is different. And then in addition, they pointed out that a lot of them aren't Connecticut residents. So I'm talking kind of about two things when it comes to how you're going to fill the proposed program and kind of meet the requirement that you're surveying Connecticut residents, if you could address that.
Sure. So first on the waitlist, the waitlist that someone described that we initially put in 2017 to 20, it has literally ballooned in the back half of last year and continues to rise. The highest our waitlist has ever been is 150, and that literally was about two or three days ago. And again, that's company-wide. Our waitlist in Connecticut for our Bethlehem campus was 65 last night and there were 11 clients on that, or potential clients on that waitlist from the state of Connecticut. Access is really an interesting topic in terms of who we provide access to. So typically, when a young person goes on our waitlist, it's just systematic. The next person moves up, we contact the family. We have a bed, you know, here in Connecticut, we have a bed in California, we have a bed in Washington State. This is what we think your insurance, you know, your copays and deductibles will be based on where you choose to go and you can accept that bed or not. And so we don't discriminate based on where someone comes from in terms of providing access to treatment. I was having a conversation with a neighbor and she said, well, can't you just give Connecticut folks priority access to treatment? And I think that's a little bit of a slippery slope in that, you know, if you have a kid who's from, you know, 26 miles away in New York and he's sitting on the waitlist for two weeks and he has suicidal ideations and you want to bump him with somebody who's new because they're from Connecticut, that's a really difficult clinical decision for us to make. If everything were equal, we would provide access to Connecticut folks first, but we have to take into consideration the acuity of the folks who are coming to treatment for us and how long they've been sitting on a waitlist waiting for a bed.
So next thing I want to talk about is need. So people have been raising issues surrounding need. They say that there are already other places in Connecticut that can serve this population. Can you talk about why you feel like the proposed program is needed in Connecticut?
Absolutely, yeah. So as I spoke, sorry. As I spoke about this morning, really what we get a ton of calls for are local Connecticut families that are looking for primary mental health services. In order to qualify for the treatment centers that do exist currently in the state, either you have to have a primary eating disorder diagnosis, a primary substance use disorder diagnosis, which many of our patients, even if they're smoking weed, they may not meet criteria for an SUD diagnosis. To have true levels of dependence. Or it has to be someone who's, the primary mental health facilities all require out-of-pocket payments. So there's no availability right now within the state. Even Institute of Living, one of the biggest programs here in Connecticut, said that this is a problem that they're facing every single day. Is that they cannot find residential treatment centers that are able to treat clients from Connecticut using their insurance that have a primary mental health diagnosis.
And then I think the-
And I can go through all the, I have all the programs here in Connecticut. I'm happy to go through all of them and kind of highlight which one does which, if you would like, that would be helpful.
Can we talk about the ones in your service area?
Yeah.
Yes, then I would.
So like Silver Hill Hospital?
Yes.
Okay. So Silver Hill Hospital has an inpatient program. It's a three to seven day program. They're actually one of our largest referral sources in our Bethlehem campus because they often treat clients for three to seven days and then are in need of a step-down program to a residential treatment center. The only programs that they offer are all out-of-pocket for an average of about $50,000. With insurance benefits, it goes down to about $47,000 per month. They are non- For the residential. They are a nonprofit, but in order to qualify for a scholarship in their program, you have to be in their program. And then you can maybe get a scholarship for another week or two, once you're there. So we get a lot of referrals from Silver Hill for residential treatment because we're able to work with those clients and with their insurance. Rushford, Rushford requires a primary substance use disorder diagnosis. Mountainside, we work with well. We love Mountainside. They also require a primary substance use diagnosis. And many of the clients that we treat that are ages 18 to 20 just don't meet criteria for that SUD diagnosis. They don't require detox. They're people who are maybe at home smoking weed, but don't reach true levels of dependence. Turnbridge is another one that's come up a couple of times today. So Turnbridge also requires a primary SUD diagnosis. They only provide IOP level of care. They do have a transitional living facility, so you're able to live there. But the transitional living facility is an out-of-pocket cost to families. Typically around $10,000 per month. And that's a 12-month program, so around $100,000 to $120,000.
Okay, so just a couple more questions. These are-
Oh, sorry, Angela's House. Angela's House is another big one. Another great program. They're a nonprofit, they're part of Wellspring. They treat primary mental health clients. However, they do not accept insurance. So it's $390. There's Eli's House, $390 per day. There's Eli's House, which is a part of IOL. And you have to get a referral from the state, from the Department of Mental Health, I believe. Or D-
DCF.
DCF into DMAS into Eli's House.
So just a couple of questions on quality. And so I heard a comment about one of the pieces of, one of the studies that you provided us that basically says that six to 12 months is the, I guess, the best amount of time. I want to say, I might be mischaracterizing it, but it might, that six to 12 months is kind of the necessary amount of time for someone to receive benefit from a residential facility? Did you hear that comment? No one?
I heard the comment, but I thought they said it was up to six to 12 months. I'm not sure which article it points to.
So can you, maybe you can, I was going to say, doctor, maybe you can kind of respond to the number of days that your organization recommends and how that works in terms of, or how that falls in with this study that was provided?
Sure.
Any application?
Sure. I don't have it in front of my eyes, but I'm pretty sure it's a study that at least is 15 years old or something like that. Where at that time, all treatments were much longer and the trend has been both from inpatient to residential to shortening the length of stay driven by the pressure put by insurance to have the treatment done faster and faster. So there's this tension where clinically, we would, you know, it would be clear that some, there would be some benefit to continue to treat resident in all programs around the country, not just in Newport. But there's not a commitment from a society to provide that kind of work and that kind of coverage. Now, so the model shifted from being, doing work from six to 12 months in a residential. A lot of it is engaging the person into treatment within this 45 to 60 days, engaging them in treatment. So imagine you have someone who doesn't want treatment, doesn't think there's anything wrong with them. And within 45 to 60 days, can you get them motivated to really take on the work of doing their, you know, taking care of themselves? Definitely. And that's the work that is done. And then there's a continuation of care with PHP, IOP, or outpatient treatment. And then also engaging the family in a different dynamic because a lot of mental health gets reinforced by those constant conflicts at home, fighting and parents misunderstanding. And if we are a relational model, the sense that there's constant fighting going on and the background is contributing to the worsening of depression, anxiety, substance use, et cetera. So by trying to do a fair amount of work upfront, the hope is that that improvement will continue over the months when they are in a less restrictive environment.
I think, you know, as a program, we do believe in a continuum of care for all of our clients. For local Fairfield County clients, we do have a PHP and IOP for young adults in Darien. We do believe that a continuum of care is very important. We try to have that for all of our clients, regardless of where they're discharging to, setting up aftercare resources, a thorough aftercare plan that includes clinical as well as educational, emotional needs and fun activities to keep them motivated.
Okay. And can you also talk about your quality initiatives? Can you talk about some of the assertions that you haven't met the threshold to establish that your program is a quality program, that the information that was provided was self-serving?
It's a little bit difficult to respond to. I mean, the quality of the information is from our clients themselves. And so those three outcome studies that we've done that measure depression, anxiety and wellness are by self-report and that's how they're intended to be, by self-report. I'm not a statistician that can debate, you know, we had Vanderbilt University, look at that study. And the opposers had someone from Columbia. And I guess we can get their resumes together and figure out which of the two is smarter. But what I do know with absolute certainty is that the number of clients who completed the the outcome study, over 700 of them measured significant wellness. And so if we could impact the quality of 700 young people over the course of two years, I think that that's pretty impressive from my perspective. So in addition to measuring quality in turn, with the customers themselves, we measure quality with our referents. We ask them for feedback about their client's treatment state and the majority of our business comes from professional referents in the community. We measure family surveys. We do client satisfaction surveys to measure quality. We look at, you know, we have key performance indicators where we look at, you know, the number of incidents that may occur on a particular location. We use our national database to determine how to make those, those, our facilities safer and to improve care. We look at discharge rates in terms of how many of our clients successfully complete treatment. So there's a whole myriad of statistical indicators that we follow with the purpose of, you know, again, finding opportunities to do better and improve care. And so we study quality very seriously. And then overarching all of it, we've got the state, DPH, DH, DCA, DCF, and we've got joint commission. And they all look at, you know, quality factors and determine whether or not we're a viable program. And today, all of our licenses across the country are in good standing. We're fully certified at all of our programs by the joint commission. So I think we have a lot on the quality side that I would hope that OHS would appreciate.
There was a question about why we use self-report. Self-report is different than just asking a person how they're doing because it's not always standardized. In a self-report, there are very standard questions that have been tested over thousands of answers and we have, we know by that that a person reporting that improvement is somewhat significantly better or not. So it's a way of standardizing the subjective impression of the person. So that person ultimately saying, I'm less depressed. I'm less anxious and I'm feeling better. That's what a self-report does. Now you could argue that maybe it should be done by an outsider, but then you will, you will have the argument that the outsider has a bias for good outcome and ultimately it's somewhat better to rely on that person's subjective experience to say, I'm feeling less depressed. And those standards are, and those, those PHQ9 and GAD7 and all that are very well standardized around the world, I would say. It's very well established as measures of anxiety and depression.
Joe touched on to the client surveying in terms of the client experience and the family experience. So we survey our clients throughout the treatment experience. So when they first get there, during the middle of their stay, I think it's at day 21, at day 45, and then at day of discharge.
And these are all standardized types?
Yes. Yeah. And we're tracking client satisfaction and family satisfaction and are able to make really immediate changes if we need to. Luckily, we normally score pretty high. Our kids complain about no sugar, but other than that.
All right. We do not have any additional questions, but I'm going to actually turn it over to counsel for the applicants in case there's anything that she wants to add to the record or any closing remarks that she wants to make.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate the opportunity to have a chance to speak to you today about this important program. I think we've heard a lot of comments that were based on speculation. But those people who have had a direct experience with this program have come in here to tell you the amazing life-changing impact that it has had. The data on need is overwhelming. And the HUB report indicated that the need is even more severe among patients who have commercial insurance than it is in many cases among those who are on Medicaid or DMAS because there are special programs for them, whereas many programs, as we've heard, do not take any commercial insurance. So there is a huge need for people with insurance and this program is very unique in the way that it works with insurance. So we do believe that the need is overwhelming. The quality data is overwhelming. There has been no contrary evidence. There is just an overwhelming and crushing need for this type of service. It's transformative to the lives of those that it touches. And we really appreciate your opportunity to present the program and hope that you will grant the CION application.
Thanks. I just have possibly two late, two late files for you. I just want to ask, when you guys keep track of your waitlists, do you track age, gender, those types of things?
Yeah, yes, we do. We're both.
So for your current waitlist, they said that, I believe, there were 65?
Yes, for Bethlehem today?
Yeah. So can you provide us with information regarding the gender, town of residence and age for that waitlist?
Yes, we can.
All right. And then additionally, we're looking for some evidence over the last three years of the average out-of-pocket cost. I know that you raised some issues with regard to competitive information. Let me ask counsel, do you have any concerns about that? Or is there any way that you think that you can get us that information without?
I think we need to see what, what data exists and what form it's in. And we can certainly do something like an affidavit from the CFO confirming the average out-of-pocket cost.
All right. And I really kind of, I really want to see how that is derived. I don't want to put you at risk for any, any type of confidential, private, competitive information, but this is something that we're interested in because this has been raised multiple times throughout the hearing and it's a huge issue that I know that I have to be able to justify to the executive director if she's going to sign a decision related to that. So I will leave the record open for seven days so that you can provide information both on the waitlist and then also on the out-of-pocket costs. So we're looking for a three-year trend? That's okay. Any questions that you have about that?
No, I guess one, just one question in terms of the waitlist.
Yes.
One thing that is helpful to understand is that if these programs were allowed to open, because currently there is a small overlap in the age group served, it's not just the waitlist that matters. It would allow rebalancing of the age, ages served. So potentially folks that are currently in the program, not on the waitlist would be able to move, you know what I mean?
Forward to the new, to the new program if it was open?
You'd have more focus on the 14 to 18-year-old in Darien, taking some of the 18 to 20-year-olds that may not be on a waitlist, but may be currently served out of that population and moving them over. I'm not saying obviously current people would be moved, but in the future, it would allow them to focus more and to put, to serve more of the folks that are on the waitlist, both, in both age groups.
I do also think it's important to note that the clients that we're serving right now, professionals in the community, know us as treating clients up to age 20.
Right.
So they're not sending us clients that are 21 to 26 years old. So we would have more people.
I think we're interested in a couple of things. So one of the things is how many of the people on the waitlist are actually from Connecticut, because that was raised. So we're, we're looking at that. And then, you know, while we're talking about it, I'm kind of backtracking. I know that we were talking about wait files, but this is one thing that I think that I forgot when I was asking questions. So I just want to make sure that I ask you this. So it was brought up that a lot of your advertisement and, you know, kind of would appeal to people who are out of state. And so is there anything that you can say about that? Because the overarching concern- Because the, uh, the overarching concern is that your program might be tailored according to some people's opinions to people who are not in Connecticut. So, you know, I think that this is something that we wanna make sure that we cover.
Sure, so on that same website where that, excuse me, where that information was derived, in the back of that, you'll see a map that shows where all of our clients came from. It's like a map of the United States, and you'll see there's a significant density around our facilities. Typically, the majority of our clients come from a three-hour radius of where we are.
We do make parents also, parent participation is mandatory in treatment. So, if they're closer, they're able to participate in a more meaningful way.
Okay. All right, I don't have any additional questions, anything additional from the applicant?
I just would like to make one comment to, uh, our families, and I know most of them have left and who came, just the, again, and I think others have said this and not to sound redundant, but the courage that they showed to come and talk about their personal experience and share what little part Newport had in their treatment because really, the young people are doing all the work, we get them started on the right path. But those young people who came in and spoke about their treatment experience with us and how it has helped them in their life, I just wanted to thank them for, uh, standing up, uh, in a really difficult circumstance and talking about the care they received.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, so, the hearing is now adjourned. We're gonna keep their record open for seven calendar days, that would be March eleventh for the production of late files. Thanks, everybody.